All right, good morning, everybody. And welcome to this May 24th Planning Commission meeting. If we could start by saluting the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here.
Mr. Brenton?
Here.
Mr. Denios absent, Mr. Sevison absent, Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Report from Planning Director.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Paul Thompson with Planning Services. Okay, recent board actions. April 23rd was a Tahoe meeting. At that meeting, we heard up, they heard updates of the Cabin Creek biomass project. The status there is the administrative draft has been released for internal review, and the staff's comments on that document are due on June 4th. There was also an update on the regional plan, TRPA regional plan. The regional plan and associated environmental impact report, impact statement was released for public comment on April 25th. The comment period closes on June 28th, and staff will be preparing comments for the Board's review and approval, and that'll be going to the Board on June 19th. Also, there was an update on the Tahoe Basin community plans. Their, the plan teams have been selected for each of the identified plan areas, and those plan areas are the, there's four. There's the West Shore, the Greater Tahoe City, the North Tahoe West, and the North Tahoe East plan areas. And we had a kickoff meeting that was held up in Tahoe at the Kings Beach Conference Center on, on May 9th with, on the updates. May 8th Board Meeting, the Board considered options for an update to the Sheridan Community Plan, and the Board directed the staff to develop a work plan proposal for a fairgrounds relocation option. And what this is, is this option will consider an alternative that examines the feasibility of relocating the Placer County fairgrounds into the Sheridan area. Upcoming Board Meetings, an appeal was filed on both the Olive Ranch and Tarasina Gate denials, no surprise there, and these appeals will be tentatively scheduled on the Board July 10th. Upcoming Planning Commission hearings. June 7th will be amazing facts. June 14th is canceled. The June 28th meeting will have a number of items, an appeal on the environmental determination for a grading permit, the Headquarters RV Park, the Orchard at Penrin, Homewood Villas at, at Harborside, and the Sugar Bowl Academy relocation. So that's, at this point, is tentative. Any questions?
It looked like it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now it's time we can have comments from the public on anything that is not on today's agenda.
Good morning, my name is Marilyn Jasper. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club and Public Interest Coalition on an item not on the agenda. We'd like to bring to your attention a situation that's recently caused some major consternation amongst some communities. Currently, there are four proposals in the county for year-round community centers. These are designations. Three of those requests are west of the divide on farm or ag-zoned areas, which we believe are inappropriate and incompatible land uses. Everyone supports agriculture, that's, that's not at play here. In fact, to help protect and preserve ag operations, especially for struggling farmers, Placer County grants special entitlements that it doesn't grant to urban landowners, such as selling produce and value-added goods at roadside stands, special ordinances, building or event fee waivers to promote, to give relief from burdens with agriculture. Although these current year-round community center requests claim to be promoting agriculture, in fact, they are huge, multimillion-dollar estates that become commercial investments complete with tax write-offs, and they are those first and ag second. Because the year-round community center definition is so broad and so vague, we find, we're finding that out with the current round of MAC meetings, it can include just about any activity the applicant can be creative enough to put in on the permit, to get the permit. And this is what's raised some legitimate concerns from neighbors. It can be weekly parties, weddings, concerts, it, it, the sky's the limit, there are no definitions. Applicants may state that they'll keep the noise down, limit the customers or the attendees to 200, whatever their provisions are, but the designation goes with the land, not with the word of the applicant. If conditions on the minor use permit are violated, often the neighbors have a tough time, and I can attest to this, with complaints to ensure compliance. In other words, the conditions for approval are sometimes hard to enforce by neighbors. We hope that you, the Planning Commission, will support a more thorough examination of community center designations, refinement, and conditions for approval, of approval for year-round centers. And to that end, we urge, we'd like to see a moratorium on all such approvals until these better definitions and restrictions can be established. Thank you for your time.
Okay, the appeal of zoning administrator decision for the variance of Lucky's Travel
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Morning Commissioners. Let's talk about signs. The request before you at this time is an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision to approve a sign height variance request. This is an aerial image of the site. On September 9th, 2011, the applicant submitted a design review application proposing the installation of an above-ground diesel fuel tank and an accessory pump island, a new pump island, at an existing fuel station at the Cisco Grove exit on Interstate 80. At the same time, the applicant also submitted a variance request for a 50-foot-tall freestanding sign to replace the existing sign on the site. The existing sign, you can see the shadow right here, is on the parking lot, it's at the, sort of the northwest portion of the park, or northern portion of the parking lot. The design review agreement was approved on October 27th, 2011, and allowed for the new diesel fuel tank and pumps, but did not approve the replacement sign. The fuel tank and pumps, the fuel tank would go in this area, and the pump station, accessory pump station would go here. This is currently a gasoline-fueling pump station here, so this would just be adding diesel fuel to the blends that they sell. Here's the zoning of the site, it's surrounded by forest and residential zoning. There's a pocket of highway services, which is a commercial district, allows for the construction and use of, of commercial highway services here. There's a hotel built, I think, back in the 60s, and then there's a fueling station that's been there just about as long. This is the site plan showing the existing sign location that I just showed you on the aerial. At the toe of this hill is where they proposed to put the new replacement sign. Because there's an elevation drop here, the applicant has requested an increase in height to make up for that elevation drop. On February 10th, 2012, the zoning administrator approved the requested height variance, subject to conditions that would limit the sign to no taller than 35 feet above the adjacent roadway, and no taller than the existing sign, the height of the existing sign. We have this additional 65 feet in there because we really don't know what the topographic difference is out there, and until we see an actual survey that shows what the topographic difference is, we don't know exactly how tall the sign's gonna be, or would be. The zoning administrator's decision was appealed by Michael Garabedian on behalf of Friends of the North Fort. A copy of the appeal and his explanatory materials are included in your packets. On March 22nd, your Commission voted to continue the hearing for the appeal in order to allow the Donner Summit MAC to provide recommendation on the request. As stated in the staff report, the Donner Summit MAC took action at their April 19th meeting to recommend that the Planning Commission uphold the appeal and deny the variance to height. The MAC members also provided three recommendations to the Commission relative to aspects of the sign that they believe should strongly be considered prior to any decision on the variance. The three recommendations are as follows, there would be, there should be no LED lighting of the sign, these are all listed in your staff report as well, the new sign height should not exceed the overall height of the existing sign, and a visual simulation should be reviewed and approved by the MAC prior to a Planning Commission decision. In agreement with the Donner Summit MAC, staff has prepared a condition of approval that would prohibit LED lighting, illumination of the sign, in order to avoid precedence for such a design element in the high country. As mentioned earlier, staff has consistently maintained that if approved, the proposed replacement sign would not exceed and should not exceed the height of the existing sign that's out there. To address the third concern of the MAC, staff has provided photos of the site, and the applicant, oh, it's pretty dark, I apologize for that, and the applicant has provided a potential image of the sign as well. This is an image of the site from Interstate 80, traveling from the west. You can see in this clearing of trees here, there's the sign up at the top of the hill. This is a bit closer of the image. These bollards, I think, are all gone now, this material's storage use is going away, will be gone, I think, in about a month, they're gonna restore the site. This is one that's gonna be moving up to Lake Putt that you heard last month. Existing sign is here, you can see at the base, the toe of this hill, the new sign, the replacement sign would go at the base of this hill on the south side of that road, so right about in that area is where the proposed sign would go. This is an image of the existing sign that's out there, it's got the pricing components here. Replacement sign would be right down here at the base of the hill, it's about 50 to 60 feet north of the existing sign on the site. And I think actually just to kind of make it real clear on the site plan. This is moving very slowly today. There we go. Existing sign here, the new sign would be on this side, as I mentioned, the south side of the road, this dirt access road for a Union Pacific Railroad right in this location. So we have an image of the proposed sign as well. It must be the batteries. Okay. Here's an image of the sign. Please note that we do not have a sign permit on file at this time, we have to hear the variance request, and if the variance to height is approved, then we take an assigned permit and we ultimately approve or deny the elements of the sign shown on the sign permit. This image is provided for your consideration in terms of appropriate advertising features in the Design Sierra Corridor. As a final note, the applicant is requesting the LED component in order to, to change the electronic pricing component of the sign remotely. The applicant has stated that the proposed sign will bring the station into compliance with state law regarding advertising medium on the highway. In January, staff had discussion with, about the state requirements for fuel advertising with Will Ricky, California Department of Food and Agriculture Petroleum Products Program. According to Mr. Ricky, fuel grades and pricing must be visible to the adjacent public roadways prior to motorists entering the site. The Public Resources Code section is worded this way, "When a place of business is located at an intersection, the advertising medium shall be clearly visible from each street of the intersection." To meet the requirements of this California code, a smaller sign without LED lighting could be located at the corner of Cisco Road and the Interstate 80 off-ramp, and it would meet the intent of that code section. The smaller sign would eliminate the need for advertising fuel grade pricing on the larger freestanding sign, and LED illumination would not then be necessary. I think just to kind of illustrate that, I'll laboriously go back through all these slides to get to the site plan. So staff's position here is that the existing sign being here, the proposed sign being down here, this is the off-ramp, the subject property boundaries, I think, are in this area, so a sign could be located here that would advertise out, there's not much in this area, it's some manzanita, there aren't a whole lot of trees there, could be advertised effectively to the Interstate 80 off-ramp traffic and also to Cisco Road traffic in that location. With that, staff recommends that your Commission deny the appeal, approve the height variance as requested, and this would be subject to the conditions of approval that we have listed in the staff report and the findings contained therein. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll start with one, probably fairly simple question, but I couldn't find the existing location, what, what's causing the need to change to a new location?
I think essentially what the applicant, and they can speak to this a little bit better, he's here, what he was looking for specifically was to get better advertising out there on the highway to get the sign closer to the roadway, so wouldn't really be able to see the sign from eastbound traffic, but westbound traffic taking advantage of the view corridor that's out there. Can see the sign right through this area.
It's going right around here. Eastbound traffic sees it.
Pardon me, yep, correct, thank you, Pat. Eastbound traffic sees it through this, this open corridor here. The sign would be, would not be any larger, the existing sign that's out there is actually 144 square feet in total sign area. It's larger than it appears, but it is be far from the highway. The new sign would be limited to 100 square feet in size, that's what the ordinance allows. By having it a little bit closer, he wanted to go ahead and change the name of the sign because he's gonna be changing the name of the, of the fuel brand, or at least his, the name of his facility, Lucky's Travel Plaza, representing his name out there. But I'll let him speak to that, that's our impression is that it desires to be closer to the highway, to advertise the pricing components closer to the highway, and to gain better visibility.
I have a question, couple actually. Down further on, on the highway there, are there any signs, and I like the signs when I'm going down a freeway, that said, you know, the gas, little, little, the little signs, I guess the Caltrans must put those up?
Oh, right.
That advertise the gas stations that are at the next exit, so you don't have to all of a sudden make a rash move at, at the exit? And also dining places, are there any signs down, down the highway there that advertise this particular one?
Gas, food, I believe there are. Is that correct?
Okay.
I'm not sure if anybody, I seem to recall there is a sign there, one of the little blue, Caltrans signs, right.
And then that one sign, or one slide you had of, of the height of all the signs, what, where is, where is the existing sign in that picture?
It would be the 35-foot-tall sign.
It is 35 feet?
It, it actually is 43 feet.
Oh.
We put this up here, this is what the zoning ordinance allows, that's the maximum height for freestanding.
Right, so, so if we were to put, imagine the other sign, it would just be a little bit higher, but that's how it would be in relationship to the other two?
Right. Yeah, this is primarily for the purposes of, if you're downslope and the existing sign is up here, the new sign wouldn't be taller than 35 feet, wouldn't be taller than the existing sign.
Okay.
No question.
Mickey?
Staff, we suggest or recommend the denial of the appeal, why?
Well, we believe that a sign height variance in this case is warranted, subject to the findings that we have listed in the staff report.
Well, let me ask you this, now, the variances are generally granted for some reason. Now, in my opinion, the reason for this is because he wants to put in a diesel pump station?
The reason for this is he would like to relocate the sign.
Okay, so it's just his request so that he could have something that makes more money for that particular business?
Right.
So we don't normally grant variances for that particular reason, do we?
We do, and we have actually, we have two other signs on Interstate 80 that are approved.
For what reason?
Well, visibility, visibility from the highway.
Uh-huh. But that visibility request is for what reason?
To let people.
Improve the commercial aspect of the building?
Sure.
Okay, so that's what the variance is for?
The variance is for, to allow for an increase in sign height to ensure greater visibility from the highway.
Right, so he can improve the business, not the community, right?
It's also to benefit those traveling up the highway, to know those services are there.
Well, those services are already shown by that sign, I've gone by that sign a thousand times, so I don't know that that's actually valid, that hasn't changed. Okay, that, that's all.
Okay.
I have a question, one of my concerns when I look at this is, no, well, I don't care that he wants to increase his business, that's great, that's what America's all about. But I'm concerned about precedent, and I look in the findings that you've suggested we make that are included in our staff report, and one of the big conditions, or that is one of the big findings, is the fact that it just compensates for the difference in elevation between Interstate 80 and the toe of the, of the, of the sign.
Correct.
That's gonna be standing. I've been on this commission long enough to have been through some of these before, and the one that's stuck in my mind is the Shell Station slash Burger King at Nyack. And unfortunately, as I get older, I can't remember the details, but I remember it was a fight.
It was a knock-down drag.
And you mentioned it in your staff report in, in passing, that you apparently have looked at the details of that one. Can you refresh my memory on what we did, what the application was and what we did?
They had an existing sign that was, was well over 40 feet tall, that advertised the fueling station, said Nyack, I think it had Nyack emblem or something, something to that effect on it. And the request at the time was they added a Burger King to the station there and wanted to advertise Burger King as well, so they wanted a second sign that was just as tall to advertise Burger King next to the Shell, Shell Station sign. Ultimately, what was finally approved was a single sign, the existing 40-some-foot sign that could advertise Shell with a Burger King sign attached to the same structure just below that one. So that's what was approved.
The same height as the existing sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, Jerry, there's more, now that you've talked about it, I remember. The applicant wanted it significantly higher because he wanted it to be seen from the traffic that was westbound on 80, as they came up that hill there, they couldn't see it until it was in the rearview mirror.
I think he was looking at something like 65 feet or 75 feet, he wanted, he wanted to considerably higher than.
Yeah, it was substantially higher, okay, all right. So we just mapped the existing sign. If we approve this variance, are we open the floodgates to everybody who wants to come in and submit a sign request for elevation difference?
I think in this case, there's a legitimate case for, for, for a variance in that the sign is not gonna be any taller, this is different than, than the Nyack sign, it's also different than the Kingvale sign, which exceeds the height limit as well, in that the sign will not be any taller than 35 feet above the adjacent roadway, so it won't exceed the county height from the viewpoint of the roadway, the public roadway. I don't believe it'll set a precedence in that regard, I think the precedence has already been set for these other signs up and down the highway, and he's looking to have the same advantage that they share.
Yeah, and I guess the other side of that is that although it will be closer to the freeway and appear to be larger because of that perspective difference, the square footage, if I understood you correctly, of the sign itself was going down?
Right. The, the existing sign is approved at 144 square feet in sign area, the existing sign would be limited to 100 square feet in area.
So we're getting essentially a 33% decrease in the sign area in exchange for allowing the, the variance?
That's correct.
Okay, on a different subject, LEDs. Years ago, this came up when, I believe it was the Flyers folks were proposing to put in their LED sign at Bowman, which is there. And apparently, that is where the state-of-the-art is today, changing signs like this with, with LEDs instead of people up on ladders or long poles with suction cups to change the price that seems to change daily. The MAC was against the LEDs, and that's also contained in the conditions of approval, no LEDs. And I assume that should the state-of-the-art change, he can always come back in and request to change that, that condition in, in the future. But when this subject first came up, the issue was, at that time, the Auto Mall in Roseville had just put up an advertising sign, it's kind of by Fry's there as you come up. And within the first week or so, it was, it was beyond bright, it was painful.
They actually had an uptick in accidents in here.
Did they? Yeah, and I don't know, maybe they, they toned it back a bit, and one of the things that I had suggested at the time was that we establish a standard for LED lightings, I don't know that we've done that or considered it, but so be it. The follow-on question, though, is what is the objection to LED lighting as a rule in this particular area?
According to the MAC, and we, we do defer to the MAC in this regard because they represent the community up there, number one, there is no other form of LED lighting up there, it can be intensely bright if it's not monitored in some way. I think the example that, that you all have here, that Mr. Garabedian provided supplementary material shows the sign, that's correct, that's the one out there in Newcastle, you can see that during the day, you can see it brightly during the night for miles and directions. The concern from the MAC was that it's not a design element that's consistent with the high country. The site lies within a design scenic, excuse me, Design Sierra Corridor, where staff is required to take into consideration the surrounding area, and in this case, we would, we would consider possibly the lack of illumination in the area. It's a dark corridor, heavily treed up there, and dazzling bright light seems to be out of fit.
Isn't the Valero sign that he's proposing lit?
Correct, it's lit.
With like fluorescent tubes behind it or something like that?
Right.
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't wanna seem over critical, but I think we need to address this issue of LEDs and, and adopt them. You know, ironically, in your very slides, the one, you had one of a picture of going up the freeway, and there was a sign just top of the right, it was one of those that Caltrans puts up with the little light bulbs on them?
Right.
You know, would he be allowed to use those? What about liquid crystal display? I mean, you see where we're going?
I think the distinction is between LED and possibly changeable copy, I'm not sure. We just carried forth the MAC recommendation, like I said, because they mentioned, they, they represent the community up there, and LED illumination is, is a new technology. I think what they're looking for, what they're interested in seeing up there is just a stagnant sign, a sign that doesn't change. The pricing component can be provided at the intersection, so they don't need to have a changeable copy there, and if you don't need to, then, then why allow it in the first place?
Yeah, but as a county, I, as a government, I hate to impose standards on somebody who might have a better idea. And I think these LEDs, as much as I'm not a big fan of them, it seems to be the way they're going, and they can do things like, you know, the automatic eyes shows brighter during the day and it gets dimmer at night and, and things like that, so I would hate the applicant to leave here today thinking that LEDs are prohibited as, as just a general matter, when in fact, we need to reconsider that issue.
Yeah, staff's position is that they shouldn't be prohibited, you know, laterally, I mean, we, we've approved two of them in other parts of the county, more urbanized areas, this is so, so much more rural up in that area that we didn't feel it was in fitting with the area.
Yeah, until you get to Reno.
Yeah.
Good, let's keep them in Reno.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a flash that there was another sign post next to the original, or the one that we're talking about being moved, what's the story with that?
That one is, there's no sign face on that one, this sign, if it's approved, would replace both of the signs, the existing.
I mean, what I was getting to, Jerry, was, was that sign positioned where you were mentioning before, that another sign closer to the intersection could be equipped?
No, no, it would be allowed to see.
Put back the map and show me where it is, where the one you're talking about is, so I can get it.
Okay, this is gonna take a little while.
Okay, there's, that's good, that sign back there was good, that map. Okay, there's, that's good. That sign back there was good. That map.
Oh, the one previous?
The map you just showed us. Keep going. Yeah, there. So existence, I don't want that one. I want the other one. There we go. See, it says existing sign location?
Right.
Now, the one that I'm referring to is...
It's over here.
Right, yeah. Okay, so now where would the, actually, I, I think...
This is the proposed sign. So this sign and this sign would be removed. This is...
Okay, so show me the, the sign to the right. Because I don't...
Oh, where it is?
Yeah, that one.
It's somewhere in this area.
Yeah, further, further. Keep going.
It's up here?
No.
Oh, up in here.
Okay, and show me where the...
That's offside then. Is that right? I thought this was the parcel boundary here. Oh, so it's right. Okay, I've got you. I got you.
Okay, so that's where it's at. And the one that we referred to earlier in your discussion would be where?
The new sign?
No, the one that you...
That would have the pricing on it?
One that you showed or spoke about that could be located closer to the intersection, still thirty-five feet and...
It's the one that has the gasoline prices on it. You said it could be posted here.
Oh, oh, that's this one. That's the existing sign that's out there.
Yeah, but under the new scenario, where would that, you had said the prices could be posted over there.
Oh, oh, right, yeah. They could be anywhere in this area. They, as long as they're visible to this off-ramp and to this roadway, they'd meet the Public Resources Code section.
So that sign could be moved over there and still satisfy that?
Well, this sign could, but it wouldn't alert anybody that there's a fueling station at this off-ramp. So I think the need for a freestanding sign here to let people know that...
You go back to that last statement. You, you can see the one that we were talking about from the freeway where they, you were saying that the prices could be put?
Right.
So why wouldn't that do the same thing as far as informing it?
Well, if you're driving down the road, you wouldn't see this sign until you got to the off-ramp.
Okay, so that's what you, so you wouldn't see that sign from the freeway?
No.
You couldn't see that sign from the freeway?
Not, not this sign here, no.
You're sure about that?
Well, maybe between a couple of trees, but it would be a very...
Well, the trees are all gone now.
Pardon?
Those trees are mostly gone now. They've been cut.
Right. There are a few trees in this, this kind of island between the off-ramp and the property, and this sign is really not that visible. This sign is clearly visible.
That sign doesn't even have a face, so it's pretty hard to tell where that sign would actually show, isn't it? Because all it's got is a post. It doesn't even have a face.
Looks like it was ineffective at some point because they stopped advertising on it and built another one over here. So that, I think, that this...
That's the assumption?
Pardon?
That's your assumption?
That would be my assumption. I don't know exactly how. If, if they, the idea about putting fuel pricing here would be simply to eliminate the need for fuel advertising here. So they could advertise the brand of the fuel, if there's a restaurant on the site, that sort of thing, on the new sign here, but we wouldn't need a changeable copy here. It could be located here.
You see, the, hey, we're talking about the pricing sign, the small sign, I guess. Now, that one, there's no limits on if it's LED or what it is, right?
No, that, that's governed by state law. That's something that we don't have...
Okay, so that could be LED lighting on that one?
Could be.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, we approved the sign. Ultimately, we approved the design of the sign. The pricing component is really, it's, it's required by state law to let people know how much, what brands of fuel, what grades of fuel, and what price of fuel is being sold on the site. So as long as that's advertised, then Public Resources Code section is met. We determine ultimately what the design of the sign is and what those numbers and letters look like.
Okay. So the advantage of the LED, if it was on that side, is that they can change it inside the station without going outside?
Correct. They can change it remotely. They wouldn't have to climb up a ladder or anything like that. Get to it.
And it could be permitted. If we follow these conditions, it could be permitted on that side?
Sure.
Okay.
And no variance would be necessary because it's up there on the decks where it's already at that height, thirty-five feet.
You mean on the existing sign?
No, on the new one we're just talking about.
Maybe you could rephrase. I'm sorry to...
If you wanted to put in the pricing sign that we've just been talking about, would a permit required for that, or would you just...
A variance. A permit would be required, but a variance wouldn't be.
A variance would not be required to put the pricing components on the existing sign.
Not on the existing sign, on the new sign.
A variance is required for the new sign regardless because it exceeds the height.
No, we're talking about pricing.
We're talking about the sign that nobody has an application in for right now.
Oh, the, the blank sign over here?
Right.
Yeah.
An alternative to having a variance.
Okay, they'll, they'll talk about that other sign when they come up here, because I know nothing about, we don't have any, there's no record of that one.
Yeah, it's not in our document.
Uh-uh, no.
But Mickey's question was, if they came in with such a sign, is just assuming that hypothetically?
Oh, right.
Would it be permitted as a matter of law, or would they require a variance?
Oh, sure. Yeah, well...
Sure, you wouldn't need a height.
I'm, I'm going to have to try to recall. The sign ordinance does allow for multiple freestanding signs on parcels that are large. They could have one advertise, but they have to be a hundred feet away from each other. I'm not sure that those are, these certainly aren't a hundred feet away from each other. The new sign would be a hundred feet, so possibly...
So you can give us a definite maybe?
A definite maybe on that one. A reluctant yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess if that's it, we need to hear now from the appellate?
Good morning. Michael Garabedian, representing Friends of the North Fork. Thank you for the informative discussion about the Nyack Road background. I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. This project with its different pieces that I'll talk about, and have been talked about already, it's, it's like a tunnel. And the variance shines some light on this project. The design agreement for the, for the diesel tank, which requires a fence, so it's, the diesel tank would be in full visibility of the highway, so the design agreement deals with that and, and a number of other things. The, the design agreement was signed by the applicant in the county in early September of last year. It was in the dark. We didn't know about it, and it's, it's not something that the public apparently can notice, get notice of. At the very end of my talk, I'll talk about that, because we requested to be notified about things like that, but it's been denied. So the, a few days later, the applicant submitted a new application for the variance. The, if, oh, no, I'm sorry, new app, a whole new application. And in that application, they challenged a number of things in the design agreement they had signed. And this, this is one of several things where we would hope the planning commission would advise or recommend to the staff that they, they reopen this design agreement. And in fact, the, the design review ordinance, the critical thing here is the Sierra Design Review Ordinance. It's a ninety-some-odd-acre parcel, and about nine acres of it are in the commercial area, and I believe that the DS designation applies to that part of the property. So because specifically what the design review says, it says, the, the, the planning can modify, they can revoke or modify the design agreement if the applicant requests the modification of design review approval. The applicant has done that in many ways, and this is the first gateway. This is a clear way that we think that we could reopen that part of the project and begin to tie all these segmented pieces together that I'll, I'll talk about. Now, another way to shed light on the whole project, whatever it is, we don't know the, an application for the sign yet, would be through SEQA. The staff says that this is categorically exempt from SEQA under some of the listed exemptions, and we've pointed out in our submissions that, that the exemptions do not apply in this case. There are, for instance, there are environmental problems that this creates. The staff is recommending, there are other conditions, but staff is recommending not having the LED, which we support. We're, we're totally, fully in support of that. But there's a condition that's put on, on this project to mitigate an environmental problem in the area, just utterly inconsistent with not having any environmental document at all. And what I, I have to give you a copy of, what was, what you may recall and what wasn't mentioned yet?
I'm, I'm getting confused.
Okay.
And I've read your material that I have here, too. Are you at this point talking about the design agreement and the, the filling station and the diesel fuel and all that, or are you talking about the sign? I was with you until just a second ago.
Okay, I haven't got to...
Then I got lost.
Well, I, I haven't got to the sign yet. What, what I'm talking about is the, and pardon me if this is not clear, the design, the Sierra Design Ordinance. And part of this, the first part of this project was a, that was, that has the signed design agreement is for the diesel tank and, and the new, the island that was discussed. And we think that should be reopened as part of having public access to the entire process. We didn't have input to that.
Is that on the table before us today?
We think it should be, but...
Let me get guidance on that.
No, it is not. What Mr. Garabedian is, is discussing is a design site review agreement that was approved by the staff previously. That is not under consideration here today before the planning commission.
And you may have some good points with respect to that procedure. Unfortunately, because it's not on the table before us, I don't see it as being relevant.
Well, I'll just close on that point in saying that the applicant asked that lots of stuff in that design agreement be changed. So under the Sierra Design Review, that should reopen, the, the planning has a discretion to reopen that issue. The point at which you asked your question is the point at which I'm saying that there should be a, a SEQA document in this case. And that's really the second point about trying to sign more sunshine on this project. And what I have here is the negative declaration that was done on the Nyack Road, a sign, the, the sign where they proposed the side-by-side sites. The county did, they didn't do a categorical exemption. They did a negative declaration. And that is, that is exactly what should be done in this case. There should be not total absence of an environmental document, but there should be an initial study and at least a negative, SEQA negative declaration for reasons I will mention, but so that all of these issues can be shown to the public, the public can get input, and the county can get, get input. And this is a copy of the negative declaration that was done on Nyack Road that I should give to someone.
If you want a part of the record, why don't you give it to the partner?
So it, it sounds like you all may have pictures of the, the LED sign at Newcastle exit in the color. You have, you all have the color picture. This was taken late yesterday, yes, just as, as the sun was going down. And we are adamantly opposed to any of this kind of lighting in this, in that stretch of highway. It's utterly out of place, out of keeping to light up, light up this area all day long, no matter how bright or not bright it is. Whatever brightness it's going to have is going to detract from that area. The, the reason to do it, I mean, I say, we'll be quite clear about this. If, if people want to know what the price of the gas is, they can pull off the highway and look at the sign that's, that's there. If they, we don't want people, what, what this precedent, talk about precedent. The, the thing we're extremely concerned about here is that if this, if this gets lit up, then the other stations get lit, lit up. A condition that should be in this permit but isn't is a condition prohibiting gasoline price signs visible from, designed to be visible from the highway. We would hope you would make that part of any, any conditions on this project. Not only no electrification, but no, no intended, don't, don't permit any intended gas price signs from the highway. It's just, it's just not needed.
What is it about the LEDs that concerns you?
It's, it's, just doesn't fit with the area.
How do you figure?
It's remote and rural. It, it would, for it to have, it, it, it's, it's basically the same idea as if they wanted to put an eighty-foot sign up there that would be visible from the other highway, going in the other direction, or more visible. This is a way to increase visibility in a way that's inconsistent with the nature of this, this corridor.
I'm just trying to get a sense for, for what you're talking about. And, and the reason for my question is, you know, as the state of the art in advertising and traveling and so forth kind of progresses, things change. At one time, there were people with horse and buggies came through that area, and there were no lights whatsoever. And then the electric light bulbs showed up. And then we had fluorescent lights, and now we have gas stations with signs. And now I see the next iteration or the next step in that state of the art is to go to LEDs, LCDs, displaying like that. And I'm wondering, is it just the march of progress that you object to, or is it something about LEDs that is completely incompatible with the style of life that you see in that area?
Actually, it has nothing to do with either of your questions. It has to do with the fact, it has to do with the fact that the answer is because this is a Sierra Design District. It is not the rest of Interstate eighty. It is not the question of advertising. And back in the year 2000, the county sent a letter to the people who then owned this property, and they quoted from the design, the Sierra, the, the design ordinance, Design Review Ordinance. And it, the purpose of this Design Review Ordinance is to protect and enhance the aesthetic character of lands and buildings within public view, to minimize any adverse impacts on conflicting land uses, to enhance tourism through the protection of lands and buildings, have unique aesthetic considerations, and so forth.
Which of those is that you believe the LEDs offense?
Which do I believe? The aesthetic.
Okay.
Absolutely. Serious, serious problem, I mean...
To follow up on that, how is an internally illuminated sign different in aesthetics from something that's illuminated with LEDs?
I don't understand your question.
Well, the sign that's being proposed is, as far as what I saw, basically, I didn't see any LEDs on the, the, the sign itself as designed, but it was internally illuminated. So it's going to be a lit sign one way or another, as proposed. What is the difference between fluorescent lighting internally or individual LED illumination?
Well, this picture doesn't, the other light, the other signs aren't lit, but LED is much brighter. It's, it's what you see on casinos and other things.
But they can be made dimmer.
It doesn't matter to us.
My clock on my bedstand works like...
It doesn't matter to us for this area.
Okay, that's what we wonder.
We just, we feel it's, it's really out of place. And so, and the condition is in there. I know, I'm not, you know, the condition is proposed by the staff, and we agree with that. We absolutely agree with that. So, but the second issue I'm talking about is the question of having gasoline price signs visible from the freeway. It is not required by the state. It's not necessary. You've had the discussion that as long as it's visible, once somebody pulls off the highway and sees the sign there on the, on the roads, this is a, this is the shell, this is what was proposed for the Shell Station at King Vale. Now, this was denied. This, this sign proposal was denied. And this sign was denied because it was bigger than the, the hundred-square-foot maximum. That, that was the reason. But this is exactly what needs to be prohibited, whether it's lit or not. I think we can, we can look at the question whether it's LED-lit as one question. And a separate question, and that's what we're trying to bring up at this moment, is not having, not starting a gas price sign war on this stretch of highway. Someone tried to do it before. They weren't allowed to do it at King Vale. And we're terribly worried about this being a precedent. As soon as somebody gets a sign up for gas pricing, then that means the other gas stations are going to... As soon as somebody gets a sign up for gas pricing, then that means the other gas stations are gonna, gonna want to do the same thing. So, the, um, another, this is the first time we've worked on a variance issue, the first time we've dealt with an area, an issue in the Sierra design district. Another thing we feel the, the planning and the staff have missed, have not done, that they should be doing on this project. When, when a application comes in, they, the, the ordinance says that if it's, if it's not acted on within 30 days by the county, it's approved. And that's what the staff is, is doing. Uh, on the, let me make sure I'm talking about the right thing here. So, the, um, the thing is, what the ordinance says is that when a design review is, is also filed with another permit, that the 30-day limit is gone, it doesn't exist. When, when another permit, in this case a variance, is applied for along with the design, design review, it is subject to the same time standards as discretionary approval. And that, that is another flaw we find with, with this process of going ahead. So, besides reopening it, um, we think there, the, the, there is time to deal with this. And indeed, the first application was pending for a year and then the applicant submitted a whole, whole new application. This, this stretch of highway is, is unbelievably, it is one of the most special resources that the county has in terms of historic nature, cultural, it's a river corridor. It's, it's, it's eligible to be designated a state scenic highway. This is the area where the original California Trail in, in the Donner Party went through this. This is where there was the, um, uh, the Dutch Flat to Donner Lake Ice Road. The cross-country, the, 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 the Transcontinental Railroad, Railroad is just a short distance right up the hill from this property. In front of the property is where the Lincoln Highway was, Highway 40 was, I-80 is. This is a corridor that, that deserves utmost attention from the county. And we want to urge the county to give great detail to things that would impact, impact the corridor negatively. Uh, you, you have a memo before you that lists the Nevada gaming boards, gaming revenue figures for North Shore, Reno, and Sparks and, and Washoe County. Urge you to look at those, those figures. The, the applicant wants to get some equity, he feels, so that his, has said in the application that the signs they have aren't, aren't, doesn't make their property as observable as other properties. What we think we're seeing here is that the dramatic drop in gambling traffic is what's trying to be addressed here. That the more, that, that, we're, we're, we've got to be aware, we really should be aware, that the gas stations are competing for a vastly dwindling amount of traffic on Interstate 80. It will come back someday, but it is, it should not be, we should be aware that we don't want to affect and, and generate the decline of this area in resource because of a temporary problem. Now, the, the sign is-
Wait a minute, I, I'm not so sure I followed you in that argument. I do have your, your email where you put forth those, those numbers.
The last page has the numbers.
If I understand what you're saying, you're saying that he's applied to increase the sign so that he can get more visibility and therefore more business. And that is not due to, in, in your argument, the position of the sign, but rather the fact that the traffic to Reno and on Interstate 80 and that portion is substantially reduced because of the, um, reduced numbers of people attending the casinos, is, is that the correlation?
Well, what he said at the zoning, uh, hearing and has said in applicant, application materials and his, his representative, Mr. Hines, has said, I think in response to some of our points, is that, yes, they, they, uh, they're seeking some kind of visibility of their, their, their business that's similar to others. And this is to prevent them from be, just being disadvantaged. And the, the point of this submission is that to the extent in anybody's being disadvantaged, it's not because of signs, it's because of the decreasing highway traffic.
The stream is slowing down, not, okay, I'm with you.
Thank you. And 12 by 8 is a, a, a big sign. We're, we don't, we don't know what they want to put on the sign. There's some possibility they want to put things on it we've talked about, we don't agree with. But Sequo would tie all this together, so we would know what the different pieces of the project are.
But it wouldn't address content?
Well, um, I think many applications, many applicants will submit, along with a variance, a sign application. If there was a sequel document, we would have to know what the full project is. And I can't read the applicant's mind about why they didn't apply for a sign so that we know what we're talking about. They're really, they're piecemealing this, they're taking pieces of it and saying, okay, we're not, we don't know what our proposal's going to do. We want to keep our branding options open, et cetera, et cetera. And here we are having a variance hearing where, which is, as I understand what the county tells us, we don't agree with them. But the county tells us that if we want to put conditions on this, if we want to put conditions on this, any sign in the future, this is the place where we, the only place we have right now to come and say, planning commission, please put additional conditions on this, look at this, get the information of an environmental study that, that does, does the necessary assessment, so all of us know exactly what's proposed. So, um, the, I don't know if this is something we should, in closing, we have, uh, uh, asked to be notified because of our concern about this being really a turning point in, in the signage, signification of this corridor. We've asked to be notified of any sign applications that come, uh, come in for it. And what staff has told us, if we want that, the planning commission has to tell us to do it. Apparently, we, we can ask for any sequel documents that have, have to do with signs and get those, but that's the problem. Here's a, here's a, uh, this categorical exemption. So, um, uh, we're quite concerned about how the public can have access to know what, what signs, what design review is going on, what sign applications come in, so that the public can at least know what's going on. And, and then ultimately, we need to cure the problem to, so that on major projects like this, which to us is major because of its precedent setting, the question of precedent for that corridor, how can the, the public have input? And Sequo mandates that we have that input. But there are ways that the county could act on, that we're with, with, with design review to address our, address our concern.
You know, I'm a little bit confused here too, because when somebody comes in with an application for a sign, the specifications would be basically in the zoning ordinance. Is that correct? And so, as long, so I guess what you're asking for is maybe more detail in the zoning ordinance? Is that what you're really asking for here?
We asked to be notified when any sign applications come in, so we could, basically, so we could comment, submit comments to the county. And they've told us we can't notify, it's too big a job, or something like that. So, same thing for design review. We, we didn't know there was a design, design review pending, there's no public notice. The, the design review agreement was signed and, um, we want to be able to know when that's going on, so we can have our input. And in this case, Sequo would have provided that.
Yeah, so it seems to me what you're asking for is a policy change at the county level?
I'm not sure what it is, what kind of change is necessary, but, but, but we-
We'll ask, but I think it's probably a policy change.
Okay. But, but we, we think that there should, there are mechanisms now for, for instance, under signs, the county does have discretion to, to, uh, change the appearance of sign, require overall sign programs if, if there are more than, if there are three or more uses on a property. It's not like it's totally ministerial. They, they have authority both under the sign ordinance and-
Why isn't it ministerial? That was exactly the word I was going to use.
Yeah.
You know, all of these are just ministerial acts, conformance with existing ordinances. You know, building permits are that way, the signs that come in, the content, as long as they're conforming with various ordinances. Why would the county provide notice to the, to the public at large? That's, that's an expensive proposition.
Well-
And it could create liability where you had formally requested that and they failed to do it.
You know, I, I might agree with you in most cases, but absolutely not in the Sierra design district. This is, this is a fundamental problem where the proliferation of signs is, is a real danger. And they clearly have authority to change signs in the Sierra design district and require conditions and to change it, but without public input. And, and something should be, Sequo should be-
Then like Commissioner Johnson suggested, maybe that's a policy change that needs to be taken up with the board.
Well, we also think it's a legal issue because of Sequo.
Uh, maybe both, yeah.
But so, that's something we want to explore further with the county and thank you for-
Okay, thank you.
Hearing our points.
Okay, can we, I guess, probably hear from the applicant at this point?
Is that the stand on?
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning. Prepared just a little demonstration, just of, over the concern of LEDs. I'm just going to let this be on for a second while we talk and later we'll come back to this.
Excuse me, would you introduce yourself, please, with your name for the record?
Sorry, my name's Gary Hines and I'm with DEFCON, we're the construction management firm, general, general engineering contractor that's doing the work at the site.
And my name's Lucky Singh, I'm the property owner. Um, if you excuse me, I wanted to give, hand these out to you, as far as there's two pictures in there.
Okay, well, we'd like to address primarily the non-informational portions of the appellate's documentation that was submitted for staff to review. And later also, uh, the other issues that were brought up. Most of those, I believe, are covered in our rebuttal to the appellate's documentation. And we're going to take those, um, basically in order with the exception of appellate item 20, which we're going to leave for last because it is, requires the most detailed, extensive response. Item five was, had an issue with the Plaster County General Plan that the proposed in existing sign locations, was a question about well, whether they were within a portion of the property that was zoned for a commercial. It, it, they're well within, all the improvements proposed, including the sign, are well within onsite. They're well within the areas, the nine acres zone for tourist resort commercial. Item six is basically the same issue, restated. And the zoning for, um, the property is, uh, highway services, designed scenic corridor, is most certainly qualifies as highway services. It's a fueling station, the purpose of which is to vend fuel to the general public traveling along Interstate 80. There's really, uh, only limited access from surface roads. Cisco Road is a, and actually, a, an easement through the property. So, once you are on Cisco Road, you're actually already on the property. The, uh, our, the request for the variance, the reason, primary reason behind it is site-specific due to the, as you saw in the illustration, the depressed elevation, we're moving the site down. The reason we're moving the site down is threefold. First, and we'll come back to that a little bit later, is we're not in compliance currently with state code, for mandatory advertising code. And that is chiefly during the winter months, there is approximately 20 feet of, up to 20 feet of snow piled up right where the sign is. And all along Cisco Road, all along the off-ramp, all along the I-80 corridor pretty much during the winter, which can be, that snow can remain there for, you know, more than half the year, depending on the season. So, the other thing I'll, I'll address right now is the location that was pointed out where we had the existing sign that was not in use. The reason for that being not in use is because it's covered for about six months out of the year with snow. It was disconnected, I, I don't remember, do you remember what happened to the lens?
It was about four, four years ago. It's just, uh, the restaurant we were leasing out at the time, they had put a sign up there and it just wasn't visible at all. And it'd be covered, in pictures number five in the pamphlet that we put in there, you can see how, uh, how far the sign gets covered, basically. And so, that's another reason we're going to ta- we'll touch on later, that we need LED lights because the sign needs to be higher at the current, at the current elevation that the gas signs at. It, it's not visible half the year, basically.
So, and then-
Getting back, let me ask a question here. Getting back to the sign you're replacing, there's one that's non-functional right now and that's not even a discussion item for today, I guess.
That's right.
The sign that you're replacing, is that in the way when you're doing snow removal? Is that one of the reasons you want to move it, or?
It's, it's covered. Um, it's covered, the pricing portion is in excess of being covered by the, the snowfall.
So, it's a 35-foot sign, but you still have part of it that's covered, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's covered for-
Yeah, half of it, yes. It's picture number five, there's two pictures in there, you'll see the, where the gas pricing sign is, with the mandatory, with the state law, what requires us to have the three portions, that's covered.
So, and then the, the second reason why we're-
Uh, please, I want to further, to keep on Richard's question, the, the snow removal you're, that you're referring to that goes around the sign, that's, that's done by-
That's done by us, yes.
Well, that's onsite sign, the current existing sign? Yes.
So, you're putting the snow there?
Yeah, we have nowhere else to put it.
Oh, you mean you can't put it on any of the other, rest of the property that's sloping down where the new sign is going to go?
You proposing that we truck snow off?
No, 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 it's not trucked, I know the, the area-
Yeah, that's where it goes.
It's right on the edge where your sign shows. Now, you've got a 20 to 30-foot drop-off, so if that snow goes over there, why is it that that can't be done?
It, it does go over that to some extent. It builds up.
In that case, what you're telling me is that you're building the snow up around the sign rather than pushing it further on?
No, it gets pushed further on, it accumulates-
If it pushes further on, then it wouldn't be around the sign, so I'm not following you.
If you look at the, if you look at the photo, I think it's-
I've, I've seen this photo and I've actually been to that gas station long before Mr. Eric Singh owned it. And I have seen how that snow removal works and the snow can be pushed right off the edge there. So, I'm not following you.
On a, on a unpaved- On a unpaved slope in the winter?
Exactly. That's exactly right.
So you're proposing that...
We just push the snow another 10 feet further and it goes down the slope and it doesn't sit in front of the sign. So I'm not following...
It still builds up. You would have to take... I mean, we're an engineering contractor, so I don't know what I'm talking about.
Right. And I'm a contractor too. And I know exactly what you're saying. And that snow can go off the edge and out of the way.
It can and does go off the edge, but you cannot...
You put the snow at the position of that sign. That's all I'm saying.
No, but what I'm...
It's not the state, it's not the county who puts the snow there.
That's correct.
You put the snow there yourself. There's other places on that property to put that snow.
There are no other places?
Are you telling me there's not?
No, there are no other places on the property.
Okay, I disagree with you, sir.
I would...
That's fine.
If you point them out, we'd be happy to...
I... It's just a disagreement on that, but I think that snow can go somewhere else.
Okay. Well, we...
Well, if you'd like to come out in the winter and...
I live there. I don't have to come out in the winter. I go by it all the time.
Well, we have one of the employees that actually does the snow removal here and he'll address that.
And I have done snow removal for the Public Utility District up there, too. I'm just saying that I disagree with that particular part of your statement.
Okay.
Just so you know.
And the existing other sign that's not in use at this point in time is covered by not only... It's actually covered by Caltrans.
Right. And it's just a pole?
It's a...
It's a pole?
It's a pole with a sign. It's a complete sign, it just doesn't have the lens covers on it. So and right now, there's no power run to it. It was aerial-fed.
Mm-hmm.
So that one is completely covered. And that would be the same case... It's a 35-foot tall sign. It would be the same case if we put another sign up at that location.
If you piled the snow around it, sure would.
Yeah. So we... We'll get to that. We'd like to continue addressing the appellate items. Item eight, the zoning sign notice, request by Mr. Garabedian's organization, Friends of the North Fork, to be notified when we file our sign permit application. We believe is unwarranted and not supported by public code nor county practice. It's the function of county planning to review according to approved and applicable codes that are in force at the time. It's... If we meet that, the standards, there's no warranted... We're not asking for a variance, as we are in this case. There's no warranted notification to anyone else. As was pointed out previously, it'd be very costly to do so, be very confusing for businesses to expect them every time they're gonna do something, they have to put it up to public forum for all kinds of opinions to be input without any clear standards. And so we would be very much against such notice. Item 10 was factual basis. We provided a mock-up with generic logo information supplanted because we have not finalized contracts with the vendors, which was the second reason why we've asked for the... Or why we're putting a new sign in is as part of the renovation to the facility, there's new vendors that are using contracts with... For this facility and want them to be represented on... And actually, it's part of the requirement for some of these contracts that they're properly advertised to the general public, as any business would expect to be. And we... If you look, also, we basically presented the same type of illustration, SK001, which is just a mock-up of the proposed sign as in comparison with the existing sign. We're actually gonna be at a lower elevation to the top of the sign than the existing sign is now. So we're actually, not only are we reducing the overall elevation, finished elevation of the sign, we're reducing the number of signs and we're reducing the square footage of the sign face. So we're not actually asking for an increase. We're actually asking for an approved slight decrease. So and at the end result. Item number 21, wall signs. If you note photo number four, that wall sign has already been removed. So it's a moot point. Item 24 is related considerations. Mr. Garabedian cited that a SEQA analysis or report should be done. And it's our position that this is not required nor indicated by this type of variance, which is solely to address a site characteristic disadvantage. It's totally site-specific. It has no reference or relevance to another site unless they have a similar situation. We're just asking for the equity to be made up of the disadvantage we're gonna be having by moving the sign to a lower elevation. And let me move on to the last point, which is item 20, the gas station price signs. Item A, we have the appellant's citing of the applicable Business and Professional Code and California Code Section 13531A, which is the mandatory advertising provisions of weights and measures state code. It states that the gas price signs need only... The appellant's position was, and actually staff supported that, the gas price signs need only be visible from Cisco Road and not I-80. And that they're... That's in direct conflict to the explicit language of this code section, which states, and I quote, "The advertising medium shall be clearly visible from the street or highway adjacent to the premises." It goes on to state, "When the place of business is situated at an intersection, the advertising medium shall be clearly visible from each street of the intersection." It also requires that the pricing, the mandatory advertising, be visible prior to entering the site. So the intent of the code is clearly to prevent people from driving all the way up to the pumps, to discover that there's either a price that they didn't know about after they wasted their time to enter the site, that there's conditions on the purchase that they don't know about until after they pull off the roadway, stop their car, and discover it. Even if we could put a sign to meet the mandatory advertising requirements at that corner, again, it's gonna be covered for half the year by Caltrans' snow storage. And that doesn't meet the intent of the code, which is to show motorists prior to... Once they're on the on-ramp, they've already had to make the decision to go into the site. As I previously pointed out, Cisco Road on the south side of I-80 is an easement through the property. So they're already in... Once they're at the top of the on-ramp, they're already entering the site. It's the property limits. So I don't believe that that would meet the intent of the code. And Mr. Ricky, if you've noticed, we attached the emails correspondence from Mr. Ricky from Code Enforcement, weights and measures. He declined to specify how we had to meet it. He simply cited the codes, which I've just reiterated.
Gary, a quick question?
Certainly.
Has anybody been cited at this location for that violation of that code section that you know of?
No, typically...
Or warned even?
No, yeah. They... He came out and said that we are not in compliance. They looked at it and said, "We're not in compliance during the winter months, that we need to make a change." There has not been a citation. And typically, weights and measures does not issue these types of citations until there's a public complaint.
Okay. I just thought I'd ask.
So and it's the same thing. There's a requirement for free gas and water. If you buy gas, they don't issue citations unless there's a public complaint. They go out and they make a recommendation, a warning usually.
Where do you get... Question over here, where do you get free gas and water at that?
I'm sorry, did I... Free air and water, I'm sorry. Yeah, that would be a popular facility. So and we also attached that the...
Oh, excuse me. Before you go, you were warned by weights and measures that what?
That we're out of compliance.
And that was because you didn't have the gas prices showing, or that they were blocked by the snow?
They're blocked by the snow for...
They were up there.
Yeah.
That they were blocked by the snow.
They're blocked by the snow. Exactly. And that was... If you look at Mr. Ricky's email correspondence...
No, you tell me.
Okay, well, it's there. What he stated was that it appears that we are not in compliance during the winter months when the snow is in front of the sign. So... And he, like I said, he declined to state how we had to meet it or how the county had to approve it, just that we had to meet the code. That's all. That's... They're not gonna dictate design. Item B in our rebuttal's, safety issues. As you can see in photo number five, it poses a significant risk to employees. Even if we push the snow out, even if it was clear and dry, that someone's still gonna have to scale a ladder, use a pole, or some manual means to change it in whatever type of weather conditions there are.
So let me ask you this, then. If indeed the LED or electronic light system was put in, then the gas prices could be moved right up next to the Valero sign itself, negating anybody having to climb up there. And then it could be seen. Is that correct?
If...
The way this photo shows is that the only reason the gas prices aren't being seen is because they're, what, 10, 15 feet below the sign?
Right.
And they have to be that low because it's a manual movement?
Yes.
So if the lights were on it, it could stay there and be seen?
No, it could not stay there even if the lights were there, because it'd still be covered half the time in the sign.
Well, even your own photo shows that if you moved it up to the Valero sign, it'd be seen.
Yeah. That'd be the same. That's what we're proposing in terms of when we move the new sign up.
So that sign there goes right up to the top and is lit up and it stays exactly in the same place and it can be seen?
That would be with LED lights, sure.
Okay. So you wouldn't even have to move that sign?
Well, we are putting additional businesses on there. So we would need to change that up anyways.
Right. But the additional businesses don't have to be seen. Just the price sign has to be seen, according to the man from weights and measures, correct?
For the weights and measures code, yes. That's correct. For advertising of any business, yeah, you kinda want your business to be seen by the general public. And that's the case with pretty much any other business up and down the corridor.
Right. If they don't put the snow in front of the sign, then it could be seen. You're saying that that snow is what's really giving you a problem?
For at the moment, yes. That's what... That's what, as you can see, the snow's built up there. And I don't... It's unfortunate we didn't have a picture, but there's probably six feet of snow that falls down the hill before it builds up to a pile. So it's a tapered pile. It's unfortunate we don't have it, because we had a lot of other pictures from that angle. But they actually do with the loader that they use for snow removal, they push it over the side until they can't push it over the side anymore. And it builds up to where, right now in the wintertime, kids come up there and sled down the...
Yeah, I've seen the sleds. Mostly they're on those piles there.
Yeah, well, since Tykert's been there, they go on the piles. But mainly, they're down the slope right here. Everybody sleds down the slope.
And that doesn't cause a liability problem for you?
I don't...
So far so good. I don't know if that's a part of the...
So let me move to... Oh, actually, I'm sorry. In addition to our concern for the employees at the site and not wanting to have anyone hurt, not just for the liability issues, but it's also OSHA comes into... Regulations come into play here. So it's not just that we don't want anybody to get hurt. There's also the state that says we need to take the measures to make sure that people stay safe. And not having to scale a sign or go out in winter conditions to use a pole on maybe uncertain footing would be a big safety advantage. Sorry, what did you say?
We actually have an employee here, my manager, who runs the facility, and he wanted to come talk about the safety issues a little bit, just to kinda give you guys an idea.
My name is Kamal Narain. I've been working for Lucky for the last seven years and looking after his gas station. And during winter, it's very hard for me or some other employees to climb that pile of snow, 15 to 20 feet, to go and change the price. And I've been there most of the winters and most of the time I got stuck whenever I go to change the prices. And it's too dangerous for me and my employees, whoever is working for him, and for our safety, too. So that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Okay?
That brings us to the LED question. And I wholeheartedly support Commissioner Brentall's suggestion that develop a standard for LED lighting. LED light fixtures are where lighting is moving to, all lighting. And if you don't have them already in your homes, you will eventually have them in your homes because they last a lot longer. There's no toxic substances in their manufacture like there is in all fluorescents and many incandescents. There's heavy metals. So they're much more environmentally friendly and they use a small, tiny portion of what both incandescents and compact fluorescents use. As much as 625% less than an incandescent fixture, or an incandescent lamp, excuse me, and as much as 400% less energy than fluorescent lamp. So basically, with regard to that, we, as we have with square footage of the signage and any other requirement, ordinance that's been established, standard that's been established, we are happy to meet it, whatever it is. But the fact that somebody says, "Well, I don't like this kind of lamp because it's too bright," is ludicrous. That's like saying, "I don't like a metal halide bulb, a 100-watt metal halide bulb because it uses too much energy." A 100-watt bulb uses 100 watts of energy, no matter what the element it's made of is. And that's the same thing as true of different kinds of lamps for luminance. So what I've prepared here is a little light box where we have...
One second, please, if you would. Mr. Garabedian, do you want to come up around here where you can see their demonstration also?
I'll turn it around.
Oh, okay. That'll work, too. I just wanna make sure that everybody sees what you're...
Yeah. So basically, I have a CFL in here. I have a... An LED and an incandescent. And they're all 320 lumens. And they're in the same color spectrum, which is 2,700 Kelvin. So this is... Right now, we have the CFL illuminated. And the reason I turned this on when I came up here is it takes about 15 minutes for a fluorescent to come up to its full level of luminance. So this is the CFL right here. And I'll turn it around so everybody can see it. That's the CFL. The bulb types are... We weren't able to get the same type of lamp. So the types are a little bit different, which is why we have them indirectly inside of a light box. It gives a more equal representation, distributes the light more evenly. So now I'm gonna go to the LED. Okay? That's the LED. It's just 320 lumens, 2,700 K, color spectrum which is soft white.
Warm, yellow, white, soft white.
Everybody can see that? And lastly, we have an incandescent. And lastly, we have an incandescent. That's an incandescent, three hundred and twenty lumens, twenty-seven hundred K. So I think, without actually being able to see the lamp, it's pretty hard to tell what we're generating three hundred and twenty lumens with. And accordingly, I don't know if, I'm sure most of everybody's been to Ballpark, those scoreboard that are illuminated have been incandescents long before LEDs or LCDs. They're incandescent, just light bulbs like you got in your refrigerator or your house. And they're changed remotely. The preclusion of LEDs would make no difference. It's gonna have a diffuser on the front of it, so it would make absolutely no difference. We could accomplish the same thing with an LC, excuse me, an incandescent or a CFL lamp, and no one would tell the difference. No one would be able to say that, what kind of lamp I have behind this diffuser.
So the diffuser is the covering, what do you mean by diffuser?
Yeah, that's, that's the panel here, transism panel, and there'll be a transism panel in front of it. There'll be basically a bunch of lamps inside of it that are just changed once a day, once every three days, once a week. Whenever there's a price change from the vendor, from the supplier, which is what's required by law. And so, all we would ask for is, we're happy to meet any reasonable spec, I mean, it has to be visible. You know, it can't be so light that it looks like a child's nightlight, so no one's gonna, can see it, but as long as it's a reasonable spec, we're happy to meet it. And also, the, if you see the, the size of the letters, they only have to be six inches. So, they're, they're not even gonna be hardly, as compared to the signage, the logos of the rest of the sign. We're just trying to meet our mandatory advertising code with one sign.
Six inches, is it?
Six inches per grade.
Then it becomes a vision test from the freeway. I have in my hand a picture that I think Mr. Gary Bidyon provided us. Have you seen this?
No, I have not.
Yeah, here Kathy, hand that to them, would you please? My question is, that's the Valero station down at Newcastle Road and Interstate eighty, you may have seen it.
Yeah.
Or the one over here in Bowman. Is your sign gonna look something like that?
No.
No, that's basically what the.
No, I meant for the pricing portion.
Yeah, the pricing portion would look just like that.
Just electronically displayed.
Where is it on there?
Right near the two-foot section, see the green?
I see a coffee cup.
Can't really see the lettering, can't make up the lettering.
Oh, that's.
It says the grades of fuel, and then there's a, a price extension on the right-hand column.
Oh, I don't know I'll be able to see it from the freeway, I can't see it from here.
Yeah, it's not really.
That is age.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what the state says, that it has to be visible, has to be six inches tall, and it has to be visible from all road, roadways fronting the property, before you enter the property. That's all we're trying to accomplish, we, we would like to.
So let me, let me just kind of see if I'm really clear on this. Now, the staff report calls for a diffuser. And so it sounds like you're agreeable to that part.
Yeah.
The other issue is just the kind of light bulb that you use?
Yes.
And that's where you're asking for the ability to use the most efficient, effective light bulb that you want?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Mr. Johnson? Staff over here, the, the conditions don't require a diffuser. If you wanted to require a diffuser over the LED lighting, we would need to add that to conditions of approval.
Well, Mr. Heinz.
I, I thought I saw it in here that it was gonna be.
Opaque background.
Had opaque background?
That's.
Individually.
I think that refers to the.
If you look at the next slide.
Logos, that's why we have them shown, they're, they're black. So that's what you would see at night. Basically, just the logos, just the lettering, which is the, the specifications we got from, from staff. And we're happy to comply with that, it's a reasonable request. We're, we're just, we're looking for something reasonable. I mean, to tell us that we can't have a sign is.
Well, let me ask you this, you, you're an engineer, and maybe you have an answer for us. Unfortunately, you happen to be standing here, and you're on the cutting edge of all of this, as you can probably sense, and we, we know there are alternatives. You can have those incandescent crawl signs, you can have, you know, let the imagination go wild. But the state of the art seems to be going to LED, and as you can see from the photo, we've addressed this already at least once in the county. And you were out there earlier when I was talking about the sign down at the Auto Mall, and that it was so brilliant, it was, it was hurting. You've heard Mr. Gary Bidyon's concerns about balancing the scenic aspects of that particular area with the requirements for what you perceive to be as a commercial advantage to your operation there. How would you, as an engineer, create a specification that would balance all of those interests, so that you could have an LED light, but it wasn't so brilliant that you could read by it five miles away?
Well, I would just develop a spec for, for lumens, for illuminants. You know, this, that basically, I didn't even know that you needed an actual spec if you say that the LED portion of the sign cannot be brighter than the rest of the panels. And that's all we're proposing. If you look, it's exactly the same luminance as.
Of course, then you're gonna get somebody who comes in with a panel that's so bright that, you know, the whole thing is bright.
Yeah, well, I mean.
And you have one that, going back to the photo that you have, could, would it be reasonable to, to require that the brightness be different during the day or limited at night, something like that, you know, like I have on my headboard clock?
Absolutely, that, and that's just a photo cell that does that, you know, when the sun comes up, it dims down.
Right.
When the sun goes down, it brightens up to whatever the spec is. So, and I don't, I think this looks, I mean, sure, it's very visible, but it looks kinda ugly.
And he happened to do okay over there, but I've still got that Auto Mall in the back of my mind.
Right, I mean, obviously, the sign's not gonna be as big, anywhere as big as Auto Mall. And the way this sign is set up, these signs are a foot each.
No, it wasn't big, it was brilliant.
Yeah, no, in terms of, as far as how bright it is.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna make that a green to kind of fit into the background. We're not gonna make it red.
But if you're the president then for the rest of the county, and especially in that design scenic corridor, how do we specify it? So others who may wanna put in a sign similar to that on the photo, have a standard they can, they can use. That's my concern.
Yeah, no, that's what we talked about with the planning commission as well.
Well, we. Go ahead, yeah. I'm sorry, but that, they told us that this sign would no longer be approved. Because this background was supposed to be black, and only the letters or the logo were illuminated. And the same thing, you've got all these blue panels here, which makes this, if this were all black and only the lettering was illuminated, or the logo was illuminated, it would look a lot different. It's still kind of not very attractive, the way that they put it together, which is, it's kinda like the sign we have existing. But, you know, it would look a lot more aesthetic, and a lot lower impact to the area by, you know, just limiting it, as staff suggested, to the illumination, to the actual logo or lettering. And for the pricing portion, you can limit it to stating the grade of fuel and the price. And it can't be more simple than that.
And that's the only portion of the sign that you kind of want LED adjustable? We're not talking a reader board?
No, actually, the, the lamps behind those diffusers would be LED, because they're much more energy efficient.
But you're not, I mean, are we talking about a reader board, something that's totally adjustable?
No, no, not at all.
Talking about gas prices being the adjustable portion?
That's exactly all that, that's all. There's no refresh rate, there's nothing gonna change, there's nothing gonna move. The only time it's gonna change is when we get a price update, and it's actually either done at the cashier, if it's hardwired, or they have a, depending on the we use, a remote control where you go out, this is like your garage door opener, and you click.
And as we saw this morning, nothing can go wrong with those remotes.
No. So, lastly, you know, that, that brings me down to our last point, was cost and environmental impact. Again, we're proposing to eliminate two signs, replace it with one. We're actually going lower in elevation than the existing sign. We're going less square footage of advertising space than the existing sign. And, you know, I think that goes a long way to address the impact of the area. We're, we're gonna have a much more aesthetically pleasing sign, a lot more, the, the lighting is gonna be specific to the actual advertising text or, or logo. There's not gonna be back illuminated portions of the panel. And, you know, it's, it's, again, it's, this is a much more earth-friendly approach as well, as far as using LEDs, because, again, we don't have, there's no tungsten in them, there's no mercury in them, which are in CFLs. There's no stuff that's gonna pollute our landfills and, and then eventually our watershed.
If I understand correctly, the whole sign is backlit by LEDs?
That's correct, yeah. It's, it's, the difference is, the pricing sign, the digits are, are more directly lit behind the panel. And those are indirect, it's more like this, the rest of it's indirect lighting, like, like the logos AC. So, again, while it's true that we could accomplish compliance with the state mandatory advertising code sessions by using two or more signs, we don't feel that that's really fair to us, asking us to, to bear the cost of installing two signs, maintaining two signs, and not just the cost of the energy for two signs, but also the, if we don't have a way to change it, the, for someone that's gonna have to go out and in the weather and change pricing on two signs, we, we think that's a little bit unreasonable. Anything else you wanna add?
You know, it's, some of the, as far as points that Mr. Gary Bidyon has raised in terms of, you know, visual impact on the environment, we're cognizant of that. You know, I live there. We own a hundred acres. I don't want it to be an eyesore either. You know, I'm part of the Sierra Club as well. I don't want it to be sticking out either. I don't want it to be an eyesore. I don't want it to be Nevada. I don't want it to be like, as far as, you know, Auto Mall. It's simply pricing change, you know. It's something we're having problems with. You heard my employee come here and talk about it. It's not necess, you know, it's a safety concern as well, and that we wanna address all those issues. And it, and I know what Gary had said in, in kind of summation is, right now it's hundred forty-four square feet. We're taking it down to a hundred square feet, you know, and we're taking two signs off and putting, combining it with one. If anything, we're reducing impact on the environment. And, you know, that's, that's kinda how we wanna just end it, and if you have any questions, you know.
Just a couple of quick questions. Let me see, I take it that some of the other businesses, you're looking to hopefully open the restaurant and the hotel also?
No, not the hotel, sir, just the restaurant possibly.
Okay, so you're trying to, basically with the sign, help increase or get that back into business then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, the, the sign that you're proposing would capture the people going east?
Yes.
But you won't really have anything to capture people going west?
No, we won't. And we've talked about this with the planning, and, you know, that sign would need to be much bigger. And kinda being concerned with, obviously, the environmental impact, you know, that would be probably be an eyesore, and I would agree with Mr. Gary Bidyon on that, you know. And so right, you know, in order to reduce that impact, our main goal would be just the westbound traffic, you know. We think, you know, once people find out going westbound, people on the eastbound will, will figure it out. I mean, going vice versa, going eastbound and going westbound, they'll figure it out, you know, that it's there. It's, we, I mean, as much as I would prefer to have it, you know, but it, it, it doesn't make sense. I mean, where am I gonna put it? It would need to be a hundred feet high, and that wouldn't make any sense, you know. And it wouldn't be like you're going on highway, highway I five, and you see those big truck stops. I'm not proposing any of that stuff, you know. It's simp, it's simply, I'm keeping it, you know, as you can see, this current sign looks a lot better than what we have, you know, what we're proposing looks a lot better than what we have currently. And, you know, that's, that's kinda where we stand.
Okay, well, that answers my question, thank you.
I just have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
What's the reason for not putting that sign at the existing location where the, where the existing sign is at?
Well.
Why, why put it down the hill, so where you need an actual variance? Because if you put it up on the hill where it is now, you wouldn't need a variance.
We'd just, it would just, you'd be able to see a lot better from coming from the freeway, from, from the sides.
It's because of the trees, configuration?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
This time, commissioners, I'd like to ask if we could take a five-minute break, maybe before we hear public comment? That's all right?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, back in five. All right, back in five.
About ten, ten ones in it, I think, as far as cash and one credit card.
All right, if everybody's ready, we'll get started again. I guess we're looking to hear from members of the public to comment on this.
Yeah, my name's Larry Aisian. I live directly across the road on Hampshire Rocks Road, across the freeway from the place. I'm, uh, I'm there year-round. Most of the people there are just weekends or holidays. And I don't see, or anybody else, any, could see any impact, the height or the lighting would bother anybody over there. And there's only, there's one other business, is a campground, and I got a letter from them saying the same thing. They're fine with everything. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name's Clifford Ramus and I'm a member of the Sierra Club, Sierra Nevada Group, of which we sent a letter to you about this. And, uh, I just want to reiterate what we did say, but I also, as a, as a private citizen, because I haven't spoken with the board, our biggest confusion in our meeting about this was the word LED. And I think, and I told the gentleman afterwards, if we'd all just sat down and, you know, and had like, uh, Mr. Garabedian had some information and not had about what was going on, because LED brings hackles up in everyone's because of the state-of-the-art that the gentleman was talking about, we could have a Jumbotron up there. And our feeling was that safety and, and aesthetics by one of those in that area would be just, uh, be ruinous. The safety, because anytime there's movement and you're in a snowstorm up there, your eyes jump. That could be the thing that jerked the wheel and sends you into spin. I mean, there's all sorts of things. I, I've worked up there. I, I've seen some pretty bad things. So the best that they can keep the focus on the wheel, that's the best thing for them during a snowstorm. But anyway, I want to state that I personally think that, uh, what they're saying with diffusion, and if those things are put in the stipulations, uh, that, that's fine with us.
I was going to say, I guess it's still morning. Good morning. My name's Craig Brien. I'm an attorney with the Sierra Nevada Alliance. The Friends of North Fork is one of our member groups. And they asked for our help on this, so I just came in to talk about it. Clearly, there's this, I mean, the simplicity of this comes down to a very understandable desire by the business owner to be more visible to the public and a very understandable desire by some of the people in the region to keep the scenic corridor as scenic as possible and with the thought that this is an interference. So, okay. The question about the lighting, I would agree. I mean, the idea would be to go to something that's as efficient as possible, does what you want it to do, et cetera. And, and we talked about the fact that these would be 320 lumens. I guess what we don't necessarily know is what is the lighting out there now and how bright is it now? The difference, obviously, is will it get substantially brighter from the public's point of view, which would harm the aesthetic values to some people? And so we know that you could have incandescents or fluorescents or LEDs at the same brightness. I guess what we don't know is what is the difference in brightness between what is there now and what is proposed, which would be therefore the potential intrusion? And then, and I guess I, I would like to have that sort of question answered. The property owner and his representative here got somewhat picky about the law by saying that this was to meet state law and that at times in the winter, they might not be meeting state law if there was snow high enough to cover the sign the way your staff is talking about doing the gas reading signs as well. So, I guess I'll get picky about state law, uh, about law then, because it's, the door's been opened. I sat on a planning commission for 10 years in my hometown, dealt with a ton of variances, and I found that the language of them was often just ignored. In this sort of, in this situation, amusingly, the special circumstances of this property are actually created by the applicant. As you pointed out, sir, Mr. Rupucci? Okay. Been to Italy once or twice. As you pointed out, if they left the sign where it is, there's no need for a variance. The special circumstances of the property are created by these people wanting to move to a more visible location. So imagine this scenario. I'm building a house. I have a flat area above gra, above level near the street. I have a, a lower area near a creek. I want to, um, build near the creek because I like it better, but I want my friends who are driving by to be able to see my house. Therefore, I ask for a height variance on my house so I can build down near the creek and still be seen by my neighbors passing by. That's what we're talking about. There's no need for a variance if you stick the sign in the same place that it is now.
You know, if you took that argument to an extreme, every single variance that I've seen in my 17 years on this commission had been caused by the person who did it. For example, swimming pools too close to the property line. Well, you know, if they didn't want a swimming pool, we wouldn't have to have a variance. Fence is too close to the property line. Fence is too high. Buildings closer to the side set back then is allowed. Well, if they didn't build a building there. I mean, isn't that true for every single variance that you've seen in your...
Not necessarily every single one by any means. You know, you can have a piece of property where, that is constrained in such ways, a slope and tree line and whatnot, that you could not build what you would normally be allowed to build unless you have a variance. I mean, but in reality, my 10 years on the planning commission, I tried to deny a bunch of variances for that exact reason. There's this sort of general notion that, well, if there's something interesting here that we want to do, but there's something on the property that would disallow it, we'll just grant the variance. They're actually far too easy to get.
I'm just trying to understand the, the scope of your comment, because your comment is, well, if you didn't want to move the sign, we wouldn't need this variance, and that's true. On the other hand, as, as a county, I want to be supportive of those folks who try to do business in here. And he has made a determination that his business interests would be better served by a larger sign elsewhere. I'm not going to argue with that.
So, my, and my point would be that therefore, the variance is not because of special circumstances of the property, which is actually the finding you're supposed to make. The variance is in order to support the business desires of this person. You may still want to do that. It doesn't technically meet binding requirements. And, and then, um, you know, a lot of the discussion here has been about the difference in lighting from the road, from the various aspects of the road. There are a lot of questions like the one I raised, you know? The difference of what is the future brightness as compared to the current brightness? The current brightness is further away from the road. The future brightness is closer to the road, et cetera. And, and Mr. Garabedian and others may be right that, you know, these are the kind of answers you would get from a brief secret document, a negative declaration most likely. And the applicant here asked for equity. I just want the same things that the other people get. Well, the NIAC Road, um, sign went under a negative declaration. And you saw that it got better because of it, because they went through a secret process. And not a full environmental impact report. Nobody's talking about anything like that. They had two signs there. It eventually moved to one, a better result. And, and if, if he's arguing for equity, well, that's one of the things that you can say is, equity would ask us to take a greater look at how the balance here of intrusion on the scenic values versus what the desires are of this landowner in a document where we could get some better answers and some better detailing of, um, of visual imagery, things like that. So, uh, I think your staff has gone some distance to trying to minimize this. I don't see a need for a variance here. But if you do, I hope you would try to make sure that the overall visual intrusion is no greater and hopefully less than the current situation.
Thank you. I have a quick question for staff. If we weren't dealing with the height of this sign, would the applicant be able to build that sign as proposed without any input from the community and the planning commission? Would the LED letters and all that be something that would be approved on this sign if it was 35 feet tall?
If the applicant came in with a sign permit for what you see here, as that shows they're 35 feet tall, staff could approve a sign permit without any oversight or review by anyone else but the applicant. It's ministerial action. It's something that would be handled by staff at a staff level. Provided it was consistent with all design criteria for the area, we would approve it. I don't know exactly how we feel about it at this point. The design Sierra corridor does give us the discretion to elevate the review of a sign permit to a design review agreement in which we could take a closer look at the type of illumination, the number of, uh, images on the sign, the colors and those sorts of things.
But the true issue really that is giving the appellant his opportunity to come in and make comments about the sign as a whole...
Is the variance.
Is, is the height issue.
That's correct.
Yeah. And said, but I mean, nothing else is being asked for in a variance other than height?
No, that's correct. You're, you're exactly, you've stated it correctly.
So if you were to fill in that low spot and build a 35-foot sign aside from costing him an unreasonable amount of money, that sign could be approved right where he's asking for it?
Didn't have to fill in the low spot.
Well, if he wants to keep the same visibility, he's trying to get now... Well, no, if the sign's, I'm talking about on the low spot where he's proposing the sign.
I got you.
If that became a fill, he could put his 35-foot sign on there, achieve the exact same height he's asking for, and require no variance.
That's correct.
So, we're dealing truly with an issue of here of can he build a sign in a hole or not?
In a hole and severity.
That's correct.
First, let's, I just...
I just wanted to address the overall luminance of the signs. We have right now 144 square foot sign, which is completely illuminated. There's light coming out of every portion of that 144 square feet. This would be 100 square feet and only the lettering and the logos would be diffusing light. That's it. So you're talking about a huge reduction in, in light pollution, if you want to call it that, for the area.
Visual intrusion was the word of art that I heard a minute ago.
Other members of the public wanting to speak on this, please?
My name is Jim Ricker. I live in Dutch Flat. I've been driving up to the summit. I spent 20 years working at Sugar Bowl Ski Resort. And, um, I'm not sure that a variance is needed here. As it was pointed out, that they could get the same thing by putting all this on the, the existing sign. I do believe that part of the problem has arisen with the talk about LED instead of the talk about lumens and how it's going to be diffused. And I think if some of this had been brought up before, um, we probably wouldn't even be here discussing it. But it is, and so I'm going to say my piece. That area of, of Donner Summit, the, the Cisco Grove is the gateway to the Donner Summit. And it seems that, um, a lot of the talk is talking about a gas station along Interstate 80. And indeed, it is that, but it's much, much more than that, as Mr. Garabedian has brought out. This is one of the most scenic areas in the country. It is the most historically significant transportation corridor in California. It's got the Immigrant Trail, the Lincoln Highway, the Old Forty, US Interstate 80, which is of course the most, uh, recent incarnation. Workup on the summit by the business groups, the conservation groups, historical groups, has been aimed at trying to create a, trying to maintain the current quality, the current historic and scenic quality that exists from the summit down to Cisco Grove. There is a Donner Summit Conservation and, uh, and Conservation and, and Economic, Economic and Conservation Plan. This, uh, US Forty has been designated by the state as a historic route. National Geographic Geotourism Project in the Sierra Nevada has identified not only Interstate Four, I'm not Interstate Forty, US 4040 as a geotourism site, as well as the 20 Mile Museum, which was set up by the Donner Summit Historical Society, which goes from the Cisco exit all the way to Donner Lake. And I bring all this up because these are the attempts by nonprofits, by the community, to maintain the character and the quality that exists up there. And if we simply stick with, this is a gas station on Interstate 80, we're not, we're going to miss a lot of what this could impact. And after seeing all of this and seeing the sign, as he has it right here, I have a lot less problem than I did before. But it's this type of appeal that allowed the, the public to see this. It allowed all of us to see what they might propose for a sign. And I would think that in the Sierra Nevada corridor, that a sign permit should be kicked up to the next review level. Because it does, if you can see the, the number of people who have spoken here, who've sent you letters, who have concerns about this, that this is not just one guy trying to, um, level the playing field if you want. This is something that needs to be taken, um, with, uh, great deliberation. And I will leave it at that for you to, um, uh, make your, uh, your decisions. I thank you for the opportunity.
A couple of points. Yeah, the mere fact that, that this was appealed has brought it up to another level of discretion and discussion.
Mm-hmm. And I appreciate that.
Yeah. And also, I guess another thought I have is, uh, if the business owner feels that he can improve his business by something as simple as a sign, then it seems to me it's just that economical bump that the business owner gets, gives the business owner a chance to improve his business to the level that it maybe does meet the, uh, a better appearance. You know, it, it looks better and it's more attractive for people. And so I guess one of the things that it seems like you often run into is where businesses are struggling, they tend to be, uh, they tend to fall off. You know, the parking lots get worn out and the paint in the building gets worn out and it becomes more of an eyesore. But where a business is being successful, then, uh, it's, it's able to better match the environmental climate or the aesthetic climate of the area and be more welcoming for the people. So that's one area that, uh, you know, when you talk about a sensitive place like Donner Summit, if the businesses look mad, then that doesn't help, that doesn't help the aesthetic climate that's going on.
I think it's a fine line between making the business look good and developing it beyond what would be appropriate for the current, um, quality of the area.
Yeah. Like, I can understand that too. All I'm saying is the economic climate.
We need both. We want to reinvigorate, uh, Donner Summit and Old Forty and, and, um, and, and from what I hear from the board here or from the, the commission, I think that, um, we're on the right direction, so. And I hope that you will keep the public involved with the, uh, the sign permit. Because again, even though it might meet all of the, uh, the design criteria... again, even though it might meet all of the, uh, the design criteria, does it really fit in? And again, that might go to what you said, maybe we need a, uh, a policy clarification by the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wanting to speak? All right. Close off the, we'll close off the public comment portion of this and now if nobody else is coming up and, uh, give the applicant the chance, or the appellant, excuse me, a chance to come up and, and readdress the commission?
Thank you. Uh, I think, um, it's quite true that, that to have had an environmental document where all of this could be set forth and responded to by the public, this is the first time I, sitting here today is the first time I've seen that image, that image. Um, plus, we don't have an application for a sign, so we're all, everybody here is being asked to act on what they're saying without having made an application, without knowing why they didn't make an application. We, we really, if this is the way this is going to go on, if these kind of variances or sign permits are, and, um, design review is not used and public is not involved, I, I'm concerned about the corridor. Uh, whatever you do, we will try to find ways to help the county, both counties really would need to be involved in scenic highway, state scenic highway designation. The statute passed in nineteen sixty-three that made this stretch of highway eligible for state scenic highway designation, and I think even with the changes, this could be detract from that corridor. Uh, the key, the key things, the key things we hope you would do is deal explicitly with the, with prohibiting highway visible gas price signs. Really is, uh, unnecessary, unacceptable for this stretch of highway and will only lead the other gas stations to want to do the same thing.
Well, now that you've had an opportunity to hear the appellant's, or the applicant, you're the appellant, their position, and you've seen the sign, and you've heard some of your fellow folks from up in that area testify, has it assuaged your fears at all with respect to this particular sign, or are you still of the opinion that the sign, ignoring the issue of the, of the height, that the sign itself is, is not consistent with the design corridor standards as you understand them?
No, I'm not swayed. Uh, this, uh, this is a fragmented proceeding, we don't have, the pieces have been done without public involvement, and, um, uh, you're the, you're the deciders. Uh, if you're satisfied with this project, you know, you're going to be able to make that decision, but, um, um, yeah, I, I have real concerns about this corridor. This, this particular application is the one that came to our attention. Uh, I think that the McCall, uh, the McCall variance that, uh, that was appealed by Maryland, uh, brought to our, made viable the possibility of using a variance to help to protect, uh, the, the county's beauty and tourism. And, um, I don't know that we'd be here without the McCall showing us a way to try to change the variance process, use it accurately as opposed to sympathetically. I'm, um, I can understand some of your sympathy for the applicant, I, I don't, I, I don't share it. Uh, what we see, a, a very problematic future for this corridor, which should have state highway design, scenic designation, should have historical designation for these trails and, and, uh, railroad and highway locations where you can walk from this site, I'm told by someone who leads, regular leads hike, you can walk from this, this place across the, the, the river, uh, and see signs of those other historic, uh, places. So, um, yeah, we would, we would hope that you would take action to require this information to be, um, set forth by the applicant. The most direct possible way would be for them to submit a sign application so we know what the heck it is they're talking about. Uh, all along, this, 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 what the sign is has been a moving target, it's changed, you know, in the, in the information, there's a sign with the, uh, you know, with, anyway, the, the, what it is, we, we just, we just don't know, and it's, um, so, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not sympathetic in the way you're asking about.
I actually have a question. You keep referring to a sign application. What, uh, what in your view is that?
Uh, it's a green piece of paper. To, to, to submit an application to the county, you, you fill out an application. It's a, a sign application I've asked for to get an example of what one looks like. And, um, uh, I think that most people submit the sign application instead of piecemealing it like this to see how far they can get and then, you know, see how far they can manipulate or move, I mean, you know.
We'll ask staff what the process that was followed was, so we can give a fair clarification on that, so, you know, I'll ask staff, unless they want to answer.
Paul has a, a comment on that now, I believe.
Thank you.
I guess, just kind of some background, you know, the Board of Supervisors has directed, um, planning in the county to, that there are certain applications that they entrust, um, the individual divisions, departments to process. Things like building permits and encroachment permits, sign permits, design site review agreements. Those are more administrative type reviews and approvals that don't involve any discretionary approvals. That certainly was done with, uh, an application on this property. It was, it was approved, reviewed and approved by the Design Site Review Committee, and, and that, that application is completed. The applicant, I, as far as the sign permit, they haven't submitted the sign permit at this point. The timing on that is, is up to the applicant, uh, but once that is completed, we will review that, and, uh, we have the same concerns about the design Sierra issues and, and wanting to make sure it's not too bright and, and, and that sort. But we're entrusted to make those right decisions, and, and we'll do that. And in hearing what the comments, uh, from, uh, the appellant's, um, from your commission, uh, we will take that into consideration when we go to process the, uh, the sign permit application when it does come in.
As to why we don't have a sign permit application at this time, as I mentioned earlier, a designer view agreement came in, or designer view application came in for the fuel station, the, the new diesel fuel tank and the new pump station. In that application, there was a, a request for the sign that's, that's being requested here, noting that it had exceeded or proposed to exceed the height of a freestanding sign. I informed the applicant that we couldn't process that with the designer view agreement. It would require a sign permit, but a sign permit would not be approved until we had a variance approved for the height, why we have the variance application in first before the sign permit application. Also regarding discretion and review of sign permits, if, um, if, for example, the applicant had come in with a sign permit that proposed a sign like the Roseville Auto Mall, staff would have denied that sign. It may have been appealed by the applicant and we would be back before a public hearing providing discretion on that sign. So there is an opportunity for the public to review, um, and comment on these if we feel that they're out of line or out of character with the corridors in which they're proposed.
And what is that opportunity? I don't know if it might, on a sign permit? How do we know about it?
Uh, if it was, if we determined that it's not consistent with the design corridor, design Sierra corridor, and we deny a sign permit, then there's no need to comment on it. If we do deny a sign permit and it's appealed, then it's a public hearing and you can comment on it at that time.
I see, but if it's approved, how do we know about it?
If it's approved, it's just simply approved.
Commissioners?
Well, I'd like to go back to the very first, uh, thing that we're talking about, which I believe is the height variance. There's a lot of other information, but I mean, that's the actual thing we're ruling on, is that correct?
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we, if I may interrupt, unpeel this onion one layer at a time? And I would propose to you that we start by looking at what this isn't. There have been, and then we'll come back to the issues of the height, the contents, the brightness, all of that. Um, there were some issues raised at the Gitco that had to do with the application of CEQA. Apparently a negative deck was done on the NIAC station, and, um, one of the findings that we're being requested to make in our, uh, staff report here is with respect to CEQA and that we find it's categorically exempt. Um, that's almost a legal question as much as it is a factual question for the commission, and I would ask our legal advisor if she has any advice with respect to what she heard today, uh, from the applicants.
First of all, when it comes to the CEQA determination, it's based on the project itself, the individual project, so comparing it to another sign, uh, sign applications can be like comparing apples to oranges. Really, the, what staff does and should do under CEQA is to look at the particular application in this case and determine if it is a project, and if it is a project, is it exempt from CEQA? Staff in this case has identified the categorical exemption that applies to on-site signs and has determined that that is the applicable CEQA determination for this particular application. Um, questions have, and issues have been raised in the appeal as to whether that is the applicable determination, and that is one of the, uh, conclusions that this planning commission must, much, must reach in deliberating on this particular appeal as to whether a categorical exemption is appropriate for this project. There are under the law certain exceptions to exemptions, and I don't make this up, that's the legislature, exceptions to the exemption. Uh, two would be, uh, applicable in this particular case. One is with relation to cumulative impacts. If the commission determines that they have heard evidence and believe that there is evidence that the cumulative impacts, um, based on other projects in the same area at the same time might be significant, then it may determine that a categorical exemption would not apply. The second situation would be if the commission has heard evidence that there is a reasonable possibility that this activity, this sign variance, has a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances. And I'll say right now, unusual circumstances, uh, we could go on for another hour about how the courts interpret that. Um, what the commission has to look at is what evidence was presented, and I'd also like to peel back one layer with respect to that as to what is before this commission. What is before this commission is the appeal of a variance application. We've heard a great deal about the design review agreement and design review of signs, and there is a much larger policy issue involved in that, um, as to whether that is subject to, in the future, public, um, hearings or not. But we have to focus on what's right here in front of the commission, and that is whether or not to grant the appeal, and if you grant the appeal, you'd be denying the variance, or if you deny the appeal, you'd be granting the variance, and then we would jump back into the CEQA determination as to whether that categorical exemption is an appropriate determination under CEQA for this project based on the evidence you've heard in this appeal.
Is it your advice to this commission that the categorical exemption that cited in our staff report is in fact applicable?
It's not my determination to ma, be made, however, uh, based on the evidence I have heard.
I said advice.
Based on the evidence I've heard during the hearing, I believe that the categorical exemption still applies.
Okay, and the other layer of onion that I was going to address, you, you touched on it, and that had to do with procedure and process. Um, the appellant raises some good points, and maybe the, uh, commission and the staff should be more sensitive to the issues that arise in the design scenic corridor, but I don't see anything, uh, in the existing ordinances or law that require us to notify the public, uh, of everything that's done in the design, design corridor. Notwithstanding that, I think that it might be a good piece of advice to, to raise that level of sensitivity so that, as Mr. Garabedian pointed out, what happens if it's approved? Well, it'd be nice so that they could have some input. Not only that, but we saw some of the, uh, the concerns sway a little bit here today as, as the applicant got up and talked about his sign and what was it concerned, and some of those who were initially opposed, you know, were, uh, were assuaged a little bit by it because of the, uh, reduction in the LED lights, and we all had in mind, I suppose, those lights like over there at, uh, at Newcastle Road blaring down the road. So with that having been said, now the issue before us is the appeal itself. You know, should it be granted, should it not be granted? And if it's, uh, not going to be granted, then we are considering this variance afresh, and that means that all the issues that you started to raise, Mickey, come into play. The, the light, the snow, the signs, the visibility and all of that. So at this point, I, I'd like to hear what you have to say on those issues.
Okay, well, to start with, I have to tend to agree that the movement of the sign to start with, the actual request for a variance is basically created for an economic reason, solely for a single individual and not for the benefit of the community, and my impression for variance is that's not really the reason they're supposed to be granted. You don't give someone an unlevelable playing field over and above everybody else who's going by the ordinances that are existing. To follow your argument, if, uh, uh, every variance that you've granted, uh, was at the behest, uh, of the applicant, well, that's true, but that simply means if you carry it to the first extreme, that there's really no point in having the ordinance in the first place if everybody can just ask for it and get it.
Everybody asks for it, but they don't always get it.
Well, that's why we're here today, to determine who, who gets it in particular. And in this particular instance, I don't feel that movie, granting a variance, if I were the applicant, I would certainly ask for the same thing, but simply because you ask for it for an economic reason, doesn't mean that that overrides a scenic, uh, design, uh, issue for the rest of the community.
Okay, well, you live up there and you see it every day, and I see it every now and then, and during your questioning of some of the folks who testified, you were talking about the piles of snow and moving them and so forth, and you were trying to make a point. I'd like to hear what that is.
Well, it, 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 it applies not only to this variance, but other ones given that I can create a situation where the variance looks viable. At the same point, I could come back and say, well, no, that, those conditions, for example, piling the snow in front of the sign where I can't see what's underneath it, that has to do not with the particulars of, uh, uh, that particular area, but the way that those particulars are handled. If I push the snow to the side, you can still see the sun. Okay, so it's not like it's the weather that's creating this problem, it's dealing with it in this particular place by these particular people in this particular way. So that negates one of the arguments that he was putting forward. That's what my point was on that. Okay, um, simple idea that, well, we can only push it down like, you know, so far. Well, he's saying that, well, there's a thirty-foot drop-off, that's why he needs another thirty-foot to a sign, so there's plenty of place to put the thirty-foot of snow, therefore the argument for having that particular, um, sign having to be raised or moved doesn't hold water. And that goes back to the idea that you grant a variance in a particular circumstance, this particular circumstance is self-created, and I don't think that that's valid for the original movement of the sign.
Now, there is a public benefit to all of this. Number one, the existing hundred and forty square foot sign is being reduced to a conforming one hundred square foot sign. I'm not talking about height, I'm talking about surface area of the sign. And, uh, you know, theoretically, the light is being reduced, well, you.
Well, I understand those arguments, but they come after the fact that the variance is being granted for a, a reason that doesn't apply, and if the.
So if he wasn't making any money on it, it'd be okay?
No, it doesn't have to do, if he pushed the snow somewhere else, that would be better? I'll get twice as high, I need twice as much height.
Mickey, I have a couple of thoughts here on this. One of the things about this particular area, if you look around the country, the, uh, snow depths are extreme, and it's unique for that reason. And so, also the problems, you know, keeping a parking lot clear are much different than anywhere else, and so in its, in itself, that's a, a unique, uh, thing. And, uh, another thing, you know, I mean, sitting here as a commissioner, you know, and thinking about pushing the snow over the bank, you know, I, you know, I don't have experience, you know, driving the, uh, snow removal equipment and how feasible that is. I look at the picture. And I look at the picture...
And that's why I'm...
Yeah, yeah. But at any rate, you know, I don't know, as far as equipment goes, and what kind of equipment they're using, and what kind of problems they're experiencing with that equipment. But at least the property owner indicates that he's putting it where he needs to put it, and that's where it works. And then I look at the picture, and I see this sign pole right in the middle of where they're putting the snow, you know. And if it's down the hill further, maybe that eliminates the obstacle. That's just maybe an observation that may not be true on my part. But, you know, I think, you know, if they're trying to improve the situation, and it's related heavily to the snow and the need to make their business more visible, then, you know, I think that's, just this amount of snow is really one of the unique factors that really would justify a variance.
Well, what I'm saying is that other gas stations up there and other businesses have as much and more snow and are able to deal with it in a situation that doesn't require a variance. So I don't know that you're saying that this... Well, anyway, so I don't know that argument whole or...
We're talking about this one, the conditions on the sign.
Right, exactly. And the idea is on a variance is that you don't give special consideration.
I believe a few of the other signs up and down the highway are in with variances also?
Well, I don't know. This one's the only one that I'm...
Well, this is a special situation because of its unique site.
No, well, it's a special situation because it's in a scenic design area. I think that's more special than the economic and snow removal part that you're talking about.
Let me weigh in just a little bit. First of all, I'd like to say, the discussion was really great today, I think. We need to have some of these discussions more often so we can get a better appreciation of what we're actually supposed to be doing here. Also, on my second comment, I want to issue a disclaimer. I live in Roseville, I share the same things about the auto mall sign. It was really bright, and it still is bright. But my concern about any of those type of signs is the movement and the advertising other than the auto mall on them for commercial purposes. And I think, though, that's bad, but that's kind of getting off the subject. Somebody made the comment about variances, and I try and look, we're trying to zero in on what, why we should issue a variance. And I guess that all the property in the mountains could be subject to the same requirement that we have a, it's all hilly. And the sign isn't, it won't look like that. It'll look like that with another 30-foot put on top of it. And so the sign isn't just going to be what's on top or what even what height. You see a sign up on top of a long pole instead of a sign on top of a short pole. But I guess more importantly, I was asking the questions I did ask about, did the sign need to be moved because of the new fueling station? I didn't get the answer that it had to be moved because of what they've already built or going to build in that location. So I guess my concern is that there isn't a real reason for the variance based on unusual circumstances at this location. And the whole issue about the, sorry about my voice, I don't know, you must be, some allergies, but the whole issue about pricing being covered up every now and then by the snow didn't seem to be a real legal issue. It didn't sound like it's because I asked the question. And so one of the reasons that they're moving it is because they said to have a better visibility. I don't think that's a, from the freeway. I don't think that's a valid reason for a variance. It may be a good economic one, I'm not against that. But I just don't think the variance, if you're going to have standards, the variance based on the topography and stuff is not unusual at this site that isn't probably at either other gas station or the commercial ventures in that area. So that being said, I think we should narrow it in on the variance. As far as all illumination, I think that comes later when staff looks at their sign permits, so.
That was your question?
Well, it wasn't a question, it was a comment. And I was trying to respond to the way I asked my questions. And also, I asked questions about if the gas stations advertise up and down the freeway in both directions on the little signs that Caltrans, whoever puts those up. My answer, the answer I got was yes, so. So the variance is in height. I'm glad they're putting a new sign because the other one looks like heck and getting rid of the other one. But that's not a reason to give the variance. Those should have come down anyway. But in my opinion, there's not a valid reason under the ordinances for a variance because of peculiar areas to this site. Thank you.
Let me ask you a hypothetical question. In the variances that we've seen, you know, time and time again...
Yes, you mean?
Yes.
Well, I've been here a year, so I mean...
I may not remember the ones you're going to talk to me about.
It's not like you're a stranger to being on the podium and being asked questions.
I know, I know.
What I'm getting at is, we've seen requests for variances where somebody wanted to put a pool in their backyard. And I gave this example during one of the testimonies here. And they're going to be just a little bit closer to the fence than the setback limits allow. And we consider the size and topography of the land and all that kind of stuff when we look at this. And if we take your argument, then the answer would be, well, don't build a pool. Because they want a pool because, well, that's just a personal reason, they don't need a pool, you know, they can live without a pool. Would you grant a variance in that situation?
I can tell you, I'm not sure. Let me answer, not answer your question directly, I'll answer it the way I did 25 years ago, when I was on the city council in Roseville. We found out somebody was building a pool in a utility in their backyard. The pool manufacturer did not get a permit or anything else. So he was, I think, the rear yard easement was only five feet, and he was about two or three feet into it. He had the rebar already in. We made him take out the rebar out and move the pool over because it wasn't in the lot or the size. Well, most backyards are actually too small for most pools anyway. But he could move it, he could build a pool the way they wanted it and not be in that easement. We actually made them take out the rebar, well, made the pool manufacturer, since it was his fault, not the owner's fault necessarily. But we actually moved out because there was no reason to grant that variance into this, well, this is a utility, which is maybe a little bit different because one of these days, maybe we needed to put utilities. But I think it was overhead, so it wasn't anything in the ground that they were disturbing or cutting into. So my, I guess my answer is that if the topography and the size of the backyard was such, it had a little teeny narrow backyard, and the only way they could put a pool in there was maybe encroach one little corner into a side yard setback, I would say yes because of the topography. I don't see the topography being an issue here with the lay of the land. It's got 200 acres.
I'm not going to that. What I'm dwelling on is the fact that every time there's a variance required is because somebody wants to do something. And one answer to that is, well, don't do that. You know, don't put in the pool, that solves all...
Well, I would say then, to answer that directly, I would say that if it's, if you can't and you don't have a real reason for a variance, other than you want your pool in that particular location, then I would say, no, you shouldn't grant it. Unless, again, there was some special circumstances.
Okay, well, that's just where you and I disagree. The business has decided, for whatever reasons, that they want a sign a little bit closer to the freeway. And I've driven up there, and it is a ways back. And my reaction sometimes, oh, there's a Valero over there, you know, you don't see it taking around the corner. So I'm not too inclined to disagree with his business decision.
Oh, no, I'm not either.
Yeah, but once he's made that decision, then the question becomes, should we, as a county, try to incorporate his decision somehow and grant the variance so that he can fulfill his?
Well, then, if we're going to take the economic development approach, then we need to change our ordinance. Include that.
I'm not so concerned as to his economic advantage, but as somebody who drives up the freeway and pinches penny on my fuel costs, being able to see the availability of fuel and the price without getting off an off-ramp is a benefit to me. Not having the fancy little phone app that Jerry has that tells him the prices long before he gets there. I rely on those signage.
No, I do.
Like, obviously, a majority of motorists do. And that's why they're required to be visible, is so people can make these decisions without cluttering up the intersection and trying to turn around and get back on the highway. So I believe the benefit to justify the variances there, not to mention the fact that the sign is, if it's required to be built substantially like that, it's a whole bunch better-looking.
Oh, I agree with you there.
And meets the requirements. I think the benefits are all over the place to justify it.
Let me make a suggestion. We have a marginal decision to make here that may really determine what we do next. And that decision is, we have an appeal on our desk. And we need to decide one way or another what to do with this appeal. If we elect to deny the appeal, then we can go into the next step, which is, what are these conditions we like? What about CEQA, what about variances, what about height, what about brightness, what about LEDs, all of that stuff? But the first consideration we have to make is what to do with the appeal. So for that reason, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the appeal be denied.
Do you have a second on that?
A second.
Probably going to need a roll call on this one?
Might as well.
Kathy?
Mr. Brennall?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Okay, then, Mr. Chairman, the appeal has been denied. Now we go into the second session, and that is issues of what to do with the appeal, which do we like, and the LEDs, and all the discussion we had here today.
Can we even discuss that since it's not on the agenda? I think my comment was that we should refer to staff.
Actually, it's my understanding that this is a de novo matter before us now. And we're hearing this as if it was applied to us in the first case. And I'm sure that our legal advisor will advise us if that's wrong. She's nodding her head up and down.
Well, I guess what I will say is that along with the variance to the height, we, the staff is proposing certain conditions. Those conditions do have some design aspect. And we would very much appreciate your recommendations on design, the lighting. And that will help us when we get that sign permit application.
I think what Mr. Rokucci was asking is, do we lose jurisdiction once we vote to deny the appeal? And I think the answer is no, that it's now a de novo of application for a variance before us.
Right, that's right. You have the variance in front of you, and you have the conditions in front of you. And you have the legal authority to revise those conditions. The reason I hesitated and let Paul go first, of course, is we don't have the design, the sign permit in front of us. But to the extent that the planning commission wishes to put some parameters on how that review would be done and what staff should be looking for, that's what Paul is mentioning as being welcomed by staff.
Okay, question. So if we make recommendations for their review, that's all they are, is recommendations, correct?
Well, they can apply to, they can apply to this sign only, not to...
Right, but it's not binding even on this sign, what we're recommending.
Well, are we going to approve the variance, or are we not? I mean, if we vote to approve the variance, is that then the commission's decision, subject to appeal, and it's binding on the staff? Yes, she says yes. Stump once for yes, no for twice. Okay. Then we get to issue all, go into all of these...
Say that again, Jeff. We've denied the appeal.
Okay. Consider this as if they were before us on an application for a variance. That's on your table. You have your staff report before you that says, we suggest you grant the variance. Here are the reasons we suggest you adopt for granting the variance. That's in the preliminaries to the staff report. And here are the conditions we suggest that be applied to this variance. And those are in the conditions of approval that are attached to your staff report.
Okay, so suggestions and recommendations, it's not binding?
If we vote on that, it's binding, it's a decision of the commission, just like any variance. Okay, that's on the table now. And that's where we get into the issue of height, LED lighting, all of that kind of thing.
What about the negative deck part?
That's part of the...
That's what we're deciding right now, too, as well.
Yeah, that, whether the CEQA application applies, and whether there's sufficient grounds for granting of a variance. That's also in the staff report. And then the conditions itself.
No, the variance has already been granted.
No.
No, just the appeal has been denied.
But the variance is granted at the very beginning.
But...
That variance hasn't been denied, so it's still in effect.
When it comes before us, on an appeal from a decision made at the lower level, it's before us as if it was submitted to the county for the first time.
Whole can of worms is opening.
Any of the previous decision now is off the table, it's strictly up to you.
Okay.
All right. So if we want to take this one at a time, let's talk about CEQA. I don't think there's any reason, not that I've heard, to contradict the comment made in our staff report that it is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15, 311 of the environmental equality. Comment?
Yeah, the exceptions to the exemptions, how did that go for unusual circumstances?
Cumulative impact was one of them.
And the second one, unusual...
I don't know, you're asking me to remember, that was more than five minutes.
Yeah, the first one is the cumulative impacts. If there is evidence of other projects in the same area at the same time that as a cumulative matter render this project, projects' effects on the environment significant. The second one is if evidence has been presented of the reasonable possibility that this project's effect on the environment will be significant due to unusual circumstances.
Would it be in a design corridor be an unusual circumstance?
Perhaps, tell me why.
Well, is it anywhere else in the county? I mean...
Let me...
But there's already an existing sign there that's larger, so we would be, if anything lessening its impacts.
Could have less of an impact.
Well, no, but it does your movement, too.
True, but the sign's coming down in size.
Well, yeah, if I take it from here and then I put it like that, that's, you know...
Yeah, but it was 140 square feet, now it's 100.
Well, you know, if you add up all that post and double it up, I'll bet you get more.
You know, one thing that's, is in the staff report. And, you know, like you've mentioned or has been mentioned, the sign could be built on the same place it is now. And virtually, that would, wouldn't even be up for discussion by us today. And so it gets moved a little bit closer to the freeway. But the staff report also indicates that from the freeway, which is the visual corridor that people are looking at when they're using the freeway, the sign will appear to be the same height. And in fact, they've even proposed to reduce it a little bit from what the existing sign is. And so, in other words, in terms of the design, or what he calls a special design corridor, there's almost no impact with this variance.
See, I don't see, I don't agree with that at all. I think that by moving it, it does impact sight and visual. And regardless of what someone else may say, I don't think that that's the case. I think that if you move a sign up closer, it's going to be more visual, and it's going to be distracting.
It is a little bit closer, and that's part of the purpose, but in terms of...
Purpose of what?
The sign height.
Distracting, I call it beneficial.
Well, that's why it's a 32.
In terms of the sign height, it's going to appear to be the same, either way.
Well, I don't think so.
Oh, okay, that's your opinion.
Right, exactly. It's not a given, it's not a fact, it's not evidence, it's opinion.
But is that a design issue or an environmental issue?
Well, I think they're both tied together, pretty much difficult to have one without the other.
Let me direct the conversation, if I may, to the issue of LEDs. We live in a world that is slowly but surely transitioning to adoption of LEDs in almost everything we do. Indeed, I would dare suggest that up in that design corridor, there are probably stoplights that have LEDs in them. No, what about up in...
There's no stoplights up there, that's all.
Okay, well, there certainly are down here.
I was going to say, down here makes a difference.
They're being pushed for our homes because they typically draw about one-tenth the current of an incandescent light bulb. My concern with the LEDs is, and it's one of first impression, and it keeps coming up here, and that is the auto malls sign. Did you see that when it first went in? I mean, it was like having a train light coming right down the freeway at you. It was distracting, as Jerry Haas pointed out, the incident of accidents along that little stretch went up while they had it toned up so much. And the idea that we would use those up in this design corridor offends me. I don't think that's appropriate. However, using LEDs as a backlighting in the manner proposed here seems to me to be a completely reasonable alternative. As I put it a little while ago, I don't want to be able to read a book by it a mile away, but to have it at a reasonable level, perhaps to an extent that it's no brighter than it is today.
It's a more environmentally friendly alternative.
Yeah, would be beneficial. Unfortunately, as a county, we don't have those standards yet. And I suppose it's somewhat like obscenity, you know? We can't define it, but we know it when we see it. And this is one that I think would be acceptable. Comments?
Well, the problem I have with that particular argument simply is that we don't really know what it is we're looking at here. And...
I think we can condition some of that to a...
Well, that's just it. The thing is, for example, I may have absolutely all... The thing is, um, for example, I may have absolutely all the world respect for an LED, but how it's used, if I'm gonna have, you know, motion pictures going across the screen, that's not an argument against or for LEDs. That's something actually different, if it's gonna be a moving sign or something like that. So that's, that's the argument that we, or not the argument, I should say, that would be the findings that we'd be ruling on right now.
And to me, one more motivation to approve this, to, to approve the variance and allow it to go in is it gives us the ability to pile on a few conditions that we wouldn't necessarily have the discretion to place on there. If he just said, "Forget it, I'm gonna build the sign back where it is."
Okay.
We wouldn't get to have this discussion.
Right, well, I'm saying, so now that we are having this discussion, how is it that we know what it is we're actually putting the rules on?
Well, yeah, we're, we're involved in a discussion right now where, uh, you can express your thoughts on limitations.
Well, it's not so much that...
And, and that's what we would be voting on.
Right, but it's, it's the problem that I have with it is simply that I don't have enough information to know what those limitations actually are that I'm voting on. I don't know how to phrase the idea that I want that sign to, to be, not move, or to, um, not be able to change back and forth, on and off, on and off, for those kinds of things that would be going...
That might be in the sign application. Uh, let me ask Paul.
Say no reader board?
Paul, if we were to address the issue of, of LEDs, it's in condition number two in our staff report, and we would want to limit, uh, to approve them, but limit it somehow, do you have any language you might suggest that we adopt?
I, I do have some language, and I, I think, as procedurally, I think that's what, uh, I would recommend the commission do, is, is take a look at the conditions first and, and arrive at what conditions you want, would like to place on the project. And then what we would do is, is go to the CEQA determination, and then the variance after that.
You want to take those as individual bites, not as a...
Yeah, in order, first, let's decide what, how we would like to modify the conditions, and then we'll go for the determination on CEQA and the variance.
Okay, well, my question to you still stands then, and that is, I would like to see condition number two taken out, but I realize that there needs to be some approval to address the issues that Commissioner Gray brought up, uh, and that is that, sitting here today as a commission, we simply don't know what the technical parameters are of this sign, i.e. in terms of lumens and so forth, because you don't yet have a sign application. Uh, but I don't want to completely eliminate the possibility of LEDs.
Okay.
Do you have any language you would suggest we adopt?
I do. And here's, here's what I suggest, and just let me know what you think here. Um, so on number two, it would say the sign, instead of shall not, it's, it would be may include LED technology as a method of illumination. Additionally, only individual letters and logos shall be illuminated with an opaque background. And then what we'd do is, we would add to that and say, "The sign illumination level shall be reviewed and approved by the Design Site Review Committee during the sign permit process. If the Design Site Review Committee determines the lighting level to be too bright after installation of the sign, the applicant shall lower the light level as required and approved by the Design Site Review Committee." And then I was thinking, if we wanted to record that level, uh, the next sentence would be, "The approved illumination level shall be documented and maintained by the property owner, and from time to time reviewed by the Design Site Review Committee for compliance."
So that just gives us the brightness we're talking about?
That's, alls we're dealing with is the brightness level issue and the LED issue.
So how many other issues would I put on here for, it can't blink, it can't move, it can't, things like that? It's staying at the same brightness.
Well, just they can't be a reader board type.
I just don't know the phrases and the vocabulary that's necessary to go through all the things that would, you know...
And, well, on the other hand, the, the, the harm to be avoided by those things that you point out is the distraction.
That's one of them, for sure.
Perhaps you could...
I think the regular county sign ordinance limits reader boards and, and, uh, what do you call them, animated signage and stuff like that already, it prohibits it.
We would, the, the sign ordinance specifically states, "No changeable copy signs that are, have cycle rates shorter than three seconds." So they, they can't have a reader board sign. We will not, we will not permit that.
But it can change from time to time.
Uh, it, for example, with the, the price component, that would, that could...
Three seconds might be too short for a change in gas price.
You never know.
Okay, the only comment I would have on your proposed language is you say af, that, uh, we can review it and require adjustment, uh, after installation of the sign. I would just substitute the words at any time. So I, that's my preference. Now, was there anything else in here that would be inconsistent with that that needs to be changed?
No, but I would have one clarifying, uh, condition, or additional condition, uh, to add on to that.
Number six, would be number six, or...
This would be another condition related to the LED illumination in particular. Uh, there was some mention about having a diffuser shield in front of it, that was not ever something that we had considered.
Having a what?
A diffuser shield. It's the shield that he showed you here that was in front of the light that kind of kept it from being a glaring intense light.
Okay.
Sort of diffuses the light. Uh, I would propose a new condition stating that if the sign includes LED, this would apply to any component of the sign that's lit by LED, "A diffuser shield shall be installed in front of the LED," or, excuse me, "In front of the lights prohibiting direct view of the light source." That would kind of take care of softening the glow.
Actually, Jerry, you're, you might want to just modify the condition number two. You talk about opaque background, that just doesn't simply apply to LEDs. The reason LEDs work is because the light is shown through a diffuser.
Background's behind the light, though.
That's the diffuser.
No, the diffuser's on top of the light.
Oh, it's, it's true. Yeah, behind the light typically is something that reflects it. So, okay, we can add that. Um, and I believe we need to address one of our conditions of, it was not a...
Let me see, on the diffu, now, the diffuser seal, shield we saw was in front of the light.
Yes.
So you're talking behind the light?
That's the opaque background.
Yeah, it's gonna be something painted white, and it just reflects out. It's the diffuser that diffuses it.
Or the portion of the sign that isn't illuminated, you know, the, the, the non-copy portion of the sign is not going to be see-through, where you can see the internal components of the sign in that time.
But are we talking about putting something in front of the light, too?
The diffuser.
The diffuser is...
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're in agreement with, with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and I believe that, uh, on the findings for the variance, item two C needs to be readjusted, and, uh, Karen, do you have any comments there?
If, if the commission is going to vote to, um, approve, grant the variance, and allow condition number two as modified by staff, we need to change findings to C. Actually, we need to eliminate that.
Okay, that makes sense. It's inconsistent. Was there anything else in the conditions that bothered the commission? It was the LEDs for me.
Is there, I mean, I guess the only other thing is, being as there isn't a application currently in for the sign, can we put something in that we'd like to see substantially what we've been shown?
Do you want to put that in our approval, or do you want to just defer to staff in their discretion to look at it when it comes up?
I mean, I think staff is quite capable of carrying that out, but I just wouldn't want to see something redesigned totally different than what we've kind of been shown here and submitted.
You don't like that treasury.
I would state, we've kind of worked our way to this sign with the applicant, so we've gone through a, a few renditions, and this is quite a bit different than the original sign that was opposed, or proposed in the designer view agreement, but this is one that we're kind of a little more comfortable with, and so I think this is, uh, as close as we get to, to what they're actually going to be proposing.
Sounds like some of the neighbors are a little more comfortable with it, too.
I have a question, Dennis, this is a little bit different. When you measured your hundred and forty feet or forty-four feet, did you include the size of this pole? It appears to be four or five feet wide.
But that's a good question. One thing that I think is not calculated in this is that the applicant is proposing that the sign area is only the area that contains advertising copy, and that's not actually the way we determine the area of signs. This is a bit bigger than a hundred and square, a hundred square feet, um, because they took the copy that says Lucky's at the very top there and counted that as additional sign copy above the four squares that you see below it. Technically, everything above those four squares is additional sign area, so, uh, the whole sign should be reduced a little bit in size to make it more, uh, consistent with how we measure sign area, but no, we don't normally count the pole, uh, in this case, not for pole signs.
So that would be a forty or fifty foot high, four or five foot wide post or pole?
It'd be a large post, yep.
Fairly decent.
I'll be honest with you, I've, I've never processed a sign permit that looks like that with a base, so I, I'm not sure exactly.
Still just the pole inside with a cosmetic frame built around it.
Right, we, I think we would...
Go up through the snow up there, better not, that's just cosmetic. Not with these piles of snow, better not, just be cosmetic.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, moving this along, I would like to make a motion.
Please.
Since we're gonna back into this, I would, before we get to the issue of the variance or say, I would move that the commission approve the conditions of approval with the change to number two, as read by staff today, and, uh, the addition of the condition read by Jerry Haas, uh, a moment ago.
We have a second?
A second.
Second? Can we go right to a roll call?
Might as well.
Kathy, please.
Mr. Brennall?
Yes.
Mr. Rakucci?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Before you make your, your next motion, um, I want to clarify that your motion also included the change in the findings for granting the variance by eliminating two C.
Not yet.
Okay.
It will when I get there.
Sounds like you'd like to make another motion.
I would, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we, uh, grant the variance, subject to the, uh, findings in our staff report, including the CEQA finding, as it currently is stated, uh, with the elimination of paragraph two C, and a couple of additions to paragraph two A, specifically, conditions justifying the variance, I would like to add that, uh, the variance brings the non-conforming sign, in terms of a hundred and forty square feet, into compliance with existing code, and that the burden on the scenic corridor will be no greater than previously, and that, uh, this will reduce the number of signs from two to one. And, uh, let's see, otherwise, we already have the conditions of approval done, so I, so we have, that we approve the variance.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Kathy?
I don't think you have two signs up there. You might just leave that out.
Well, that was part of the sales pitch.
I know, but I wouldn't, uh, count on it.
The one sign was the price sign, sign hiding on the side, that gets hidden by the snow when it's piled up, and the other was the sign up on top that says Valero, right?
Oh, I thought they were both the same sign on the same pole.
I don't know, it could be argued. I see it as being...
Roll call, please, Kathy.
Mr. Brennall?
Yes.
Mr. Rakucci?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
I think that does it.
All right, I think we're, we're done here. Anybody wishing to appeal this decision may do so within ten calendar days. The fee for the appeal is five hundred and twenty dollars. All right, and if we can, I'd like to take another five-minute break before we start this next one, please. All right, and if we can, I'd like to take another five-minute break before we start this next one, please.
Look at that, when the bill, if it gets approved, the billing permit...
Thank you, Chairman Moss. This is a very straightforward, uh... I'm, I'm predicting it'll only go two hours.
That's why we call it fast.
And this is the Shelbourne subdivision off of Auburn-Folsom. And the lot 16 is shown there, which is next to the Miners Ravine Preserve area off of Auburn-Folsom. And I just go into a very quick chronology that's in the staff report. On October 20th of 2011, the zoning administrator approved the variance request for the original proposal. And at that time, we did a categorical exemption. And then on October 28th, 2011, within that 10-day appeal period, we had a third-party appeal, and they questioned the county using that categorical exemption. And then it came before the Planning Commission on December 8th of 2011, and we asked for a continuance to do a further analysis to see if it should have been categorically exempt. And then on January 23rd, 2012, we sent a letter to the property owner applicant, the McCall's, indicating that we would require environmental review. And basically, we agreed at that time with the appellant that we should not have used the categorical exemption. We had a lot of additional information submitted that we reviewed from the appellant and requested environmental review at that time, on January 23rd, 2012. And then on April 13th of 2012, we had submitted a revised site plan and revised project. And I'll just get into that with the PowerPoint. Uh, this one just shows the layout of the house, and the existing shed is in this area. This was the original site plan, was proposing a 630-square-foot engineered steel shed. And this plan, it only had a 75-foot setback from the center line of Miners Ravine. Now, the new plan submitted, the revised site plan and project description submitted on April of this year is cutting the size of the shed to 450 square feet. And by doing that, cutting off this 10 feet here, you exceed the 100-foot setback requirement from the center line of Miners Ravine. And that applies, if you swing this line down, you'll always exceed the 100-foot setback that's required for the Miners Ravine. And that was a major issue brought to our attention by the appellant and the information that was submitted. Now, the current request is still for, instead of being able to get the 25-foot setback from the rear property boundary, they're asking for, their, their setback would be 22 feet. So they'd actually be encroaching three feet into the rear setback of the property boundary. Let's see, I don't know if I have anything else. Oh, this is the photos taken by the property owner. And this existing structure is a deteriorating kind of canvas, and there's a framework inside. And it was put in by the previous property owner. It was never permitted, no billing permit, no approvals from the county. And so the plan is, um, what you see here would be cutting 10 feet off of this end of it, and there's, it's on a concrete pad. And by doing that, you'd have a 450-square-foot structure, and you would not be in that 100-foot setback of the Miners Ravine requirement. So, um, if I can find it here. Um, staff's recommending that the Planning Commission grant the appeal and approve the modified variance request to allow for a new 450-square-foot replacement shed to be constructed with a 22-foot rear setback from the property line where 25 feet is required. And if there's any questions?
You're recommending we grant the appeal?
Yes, and that in effect would deny the original request. And then to approve the modified variance request.
Any other questions?
There were two issues. One was setback from the Miners Ravine, and that's been rendered somewhat moot.
Yes.
And the other one is a three-foot setback issue, is it not?
Yes.
And that still exists?
It still exists. Instead of having a 25-foot, they would get, it would be 22 feet.
That's from property line, though, not from the Miners Ravine.
Property line, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Roy. The appellant might to come up and speak, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Marilyn Jasper, Sierra Club, Public Interest Coalition. We're grateful to the McCall's for their revisions and somewhat regret that we had to all go through this whole process when they were trying to do the right thing in the first place. We'd like to suggest that the county establish, I'm going off a little bit into the weeds here, but just for a minute, establish and maintain a database of all code violations and citations to be sortable by APN, parcel, accessory's parcel number, street address, and owners, and possibly make a note of that on title, on deeds. That way, if proper disclosure goes awry at the time of sale of real estate, which we've been told that's what happened in this case, you know, the applicants would find out about these violations that had, and citations that had occurred on the same, with the same situation back in 2002, '06, 2007. And even if they missed that, it would be on the title so that they would not have to go through this, thinking they were, what they were doing was going to be approved. It would have popped up if it had been in a county database with planning. We sympathize with the McCall's, and we commend their integrity to, to, to do what's right. And now, we appreciate their compliance with the required setback, and we accept the revision to resolve our appeal. Thank you. Are there any questions?
So your main appeal was having to do with the setback from the creek, not necessarily property line?
Correct. No, it was the creek that did it. Thank you.
Any discussion? Motion?
Well, yeah, about the...
Appellate. Applicant get a shot.
Hi, my name's Jerry McCall. I'm the property owner. I have to admit, I was kind of intrigued with that last session. I almost forgot what I came here for. And I also want to wish you all a safe Memorial Day weekend honoring our veterans of this country, past and present. I have to admit, I'm quite flabbergasted what Marilyn said. It's been a long battle over this issue of the creek. And I stepped into this, like she has said, totally unknowing what was going to happen. And I always thought about the term kicking the hornet's nest, what that really meant. Well, I found out. The storage unit, apparently, it, it was a thorn in our side to redo it, but we thought it's still going to supply the purpose that we needed to put up the shed. And, and I have to admit, I, I thought my hardest part when I first started this was getting the approval from my homeowners association because they've been pretty tough on a lot of these things. Marilyn does have a good idea about things that pop up when you buy homes. This is, the shed's probably, I'm guessing by the deterioration, the lichen, lichen, is that what you call it, goes on granite stuff on the roof there? It's probably, what, 20, 25 years old? So that, that had gone on for quite some time. And I'm not the last property owner there, but I'm apparently the only one that wanted to do something with it and get rid of it and put something nicer there. I, I'm glad that we can work this out. I'm happy to get it going, and I hope everybody else will be happy with it also. I don't know what else I can say. It's just been a long haul trying to get this thing done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this? Seeing then, we'll close that off and come back to the commission.
Uh, well, I first moved that we approve the, I mean, we approve the...
Grant the appeal?
Yeah, grant the appeal.
Well, I think you can do it all at once.
And then, also, the variance findings to deal with the three-foot setback.
You want to adopt the recommendation in our staff report, including the sequel findings, variance findings, and conditions of approval? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Here we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're done.
Did we get ayes from everybody?
I think we got ayes all the way across.
Aye. I'll just make a little comment on that, so just to let you know that I'm not against all variances. But, but you saw that, you saw what that property looked like.
Couldn't have probably designed one any, any more, you know, not, not nice and square, where you can build a house and some other things on it, but that's, that, that's a good reason to have a, have a variance.
In your logic from before, you know, if he didn't want the shed, it wouldn't have to have a variance.
I know.
We adjourn.
Meeting adjourned. Wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. Oh, I'm sorry about that. Anybody wishing to appeal this decision can do so within 10 calendar days. The appeal fee is $520. Now, meeting adjourned.
There you go.
Meeting adjourned again.